It is with great sadness that I have to report the death of the Lady Provost, Linda Borthwick, on Sunday 10th January. The Lord Provost has asked me to say that Mrs. Borthwick was behind him since he was first elected to Dundee Town Council in 1963 and that without her support, he would never have been able to serve the city and his constituents since that time. Thank you Deputy Lord Provost.
Thank you, Mr. Many. I would also like to pass on the condolences on behalf of the City of Dundee and the members and officers on the passing of the Lady Provost. If any member would like to speak on the passing of the Lady Provost, please raise your electronic hand or note it on the chat facility. Mr. Many, if you could let me know who's on that list, please.
Deputy Lord Provost, councillor Alexander Bailey Keenan, Bailey Scott wish to speak.
Okay.
As does Bailey McPherson.
Thank you, thank you. Councillor Alexander, please.
Thank you very much Deputy Lord Provost. It's fair to say that I'm utterly devastated by today's news. I spoke to the Lady Lord Provost just on Friday afternoon myself and as is always the case with Linda, she continued to share her warmth, that caring, kind nature with everyone that she came into contact with. And my last conversation with her is typical of the Linda that I think we've all come to know. Last week, the Lord Provost and I spoke, as we often do, and we left that conversation. Twenty minutes later, my house phone went and it was Linda on the phone because she wasn't given the opportunity to ask how my wife and my kids were. And that, to me, is just what Linda was all about. She was always sharing that kindness, that warmth to everybody else. I know how devastated Ian and the family will be and certainly on behalf of our group, sending them all of our love and thoughts at this time, which is going to be really difficult. And as Ian says, you know, Linda was always there by his side and she has been a real support for Ian and everything that he's done and obviously for the work that she's done herself over the years as well. And it's a very sad day indeed.
Thank you councillor Alexander. Can I just remind everybody to switch off your microphones if you're not speaking at the moment? We had some background there. I'd like to ask Bailey Keenan to speak, please.
Thank you Deputy Lord Provost. Like the leader of the council, councillor Alexander, obviously devastated to hear the news today, the passing of Lady Provost. I think it was probably last week when I spoke to Ian on the phone and she was passing her good wishes on my wife in the background. I think the Lord Provost is right to mention that she has been there with him from day one and it's at times like this when we reflect the amount of sacrifice that our family make while we dedicate our time to helping others in the city or what we believe to be helping others in the city. Ian's given 50 odd years to this city and all that time, his wife has been with him through every campaign, through every door knock and obviously through the support that she's managed to give him free the time up that's allowed him to be out at nights or out during the day dealing with constituents, dealing with issues with other people. So it's a real tribute that they've had such a strong partnership. I know that she'll be sadly missed by Ian and the rest of the family. My deepest condolences are with them at the moment. I spoke to the Lord Provost today, passing on my own family and the labour groups condolences. And, you know, obviously if there was anything we were able to do to help, it's a particularly difficult time for anyone that's mourning, given that the Covid situation doesn't allow for the numbers that would be out, given that level of respect for someone who has, in the background, given as much civic life as Ian has. And, you know, in addition to that, done a considerable amount of charity work herself. So, you know, I really feel for the family and the Lord Provost at this time. Thank you Deputy Lord Provost.
Thank you Bailey Keenan. Can I now ask Bailey Scott to speak? Thank you.
Thank you Deputy Lord Provost. I was so sorry to receive the sad news earlier today. Linda and Ian were a lovely couple and over the years I've spent some enjoyable times in their company, having a coffee and a blather. And as Kevin and John have said, Linda was Ian's rock and she's going to be terribly missed. My thoughts and those of my group colleagues are with Ian and his family at this difficult time. Thank you.
Thank you Bailey Scott. Bailey McPherson, please, thank you.
Thank you Deputy Lord Provost. And like all others have said, what a very sad bit of news. I was saying to the chief executive earlier today, I first met Linda at the regional council election in 1986. Now that's 35 years ago. And although that's a long time ago, Ian's civic service and the support that Linda has given to him goes back all the way to, as Mr. Many said, 1963, the year in fact I was born. I don't consider myself a young person. It just gives an indication of both the level of service that Ian himself has given to our city, but also the support that Linda gave over these not that far off 60 years to the city. I think we've all bumped into Linda at various election times, polling stations, councils, and also at civic events. But the one thing that will stick in my mind was a thoroughly enjoyable evening at the Oscars Council Awards a couple of years ago, when I had the pleasure of sitting next to Linda for the evening and what a pleasant and engaging lady she was. So like others, my thoughts are very much with Ian and family at this very sad time. Thank you Deputy Lord Provost.
Thank you Bailey McPherson. Mr. Many, are there any other members looking to speak?
There are no other members looking to speak Deputy Lord Provost.
Okay, thank you very much Mr. Many. I would like to suggest that the council takes a minute's silence at the passing of the Lady Provost. You may wish to switch off your camera as well as your microphone and I will signify when we're finished. Thank you. Thank you everybody. Thank you.
Deputy Lord Provost, the Lord Provost has asked me to pass on the following message to elected members and colleagues. May I extend my sincere apologies to all colleagues and staff this evening. This is unavoidable for personal reasons. I would like to take this opportunity to send my best wishes and my hope for a better year ahead. With the commitment we all have, we can overcome the issues presented by the current pandemic. My thanks also go to those in our health service, to carers, to key workers and to all others responding to the pandemic for their dedication at this difficult time. Thank you Deputy Lord Provost.
Thank you Mr. Many. And I would like to echo these words of the Lord Provost and wish everyone the best for 2021. I'd now like to move on to another sad loss in the community. And I'd like to speak on a formal and civic basis firstly, to mark the recent and very sad passing of Jim McLean, who was a City of Dundee freeman, having been awarded the accolade of the freedom of the City of Dundee. Had I not been in this chair this evening, I would have asked to speak on a personal basis and will do so also if I may. I will then open it up to members whom we also wish to speak. And if you wish to speak, please press the raised hand button or make a chat entry. As manager of Dundee United Football Club, Jim McLean brought great joy and happiness to United supporters and many others with the club's incredible record under his management and coaching, not only domestically, but also through European competition. His team put the City of Dundee firmly on the European map. It probably would have taken a huge amount of money to achieve the equivalent amount of marketing for the City of Dundee that United provided under Jim McLean's guidance. From Barcelona to Gothenburg, from Munchen Gladbach and Brennan to Vienna and Monaco, the City of Dundee benefited from fame and many visitors to the city. I remember listening on BBC Radio Commentary, can't believe I was listening to a Rangers game to, from Irokes against Gothenburg in a European competition match sometime after the UEFA Cup final. And Chick Young, whom I knew, was live on the air asking the question why Gothenburg were wearing what he described as an orange strip. I called Chick's mobile number and he put out the wonderful answer live on air that this was a tribute to Jim McLean's Dundee United and the UEFA Cup final, second leg at Tannadice, and the incredible sportsmanship of the United support that evening. I personally never heard of that before, a team wearing cards to commemorate such sportsmanship of an opposing team. And of course, people remember the City of Dundee because of it. And of course, there was the Jim McLean stand from that match. His team brought many visitors from abroad and around Scotland to the city, spending money in the community and helping business. I doubt we as a city or a country will ever see Jim McLean's likes again. And on behalf of the City of Dundee, I would like to pass on not only our condolences to his family, but our gratitude in letting Jim McLean spend so much of his time watching, coaching and managing football. That takes me on to my personal thoughts on Jim McLean, which I actually never called him Jim McLean or Jim. It was always in my time there chairman. Whenever I went to his house and brought him home, football was just about always on the screen. He'd be sitting on this big white couch, some game from somewhere in a far off land on a big screen. And at that time, a long time ago, TV screens were much smaller and there were nowhere near as many games on TV. And if one of my kids was with me, he always took the time to talk with them and usually have a joke at my expense. I personally consider it an honour and a privilege to have worked beside him for many years. He was always thoughtful and considerate and I thought that as long as I was respectful, then I would be okay. And that's how it worked out over the many years, except for one difficult week, which I won't go into. I sat beside him away matches on occasion and I was struck by the vision he had in understanding the game. I remember following football from 1962, when I was only five, at Scotland Poland match at Harnden. So I thought I knew my football, but his genius, and he was a football genius, he pointed out simple things during a match I would never even have thought about. I was in awe of this legend. I missed him when he was no longer at the club and on a daily basis. And the world is not the same place without the one-off that was and is the football legend Jim McLean. Thank you. Mr. Many, is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Deputy Lord Provost, Bailey Keenan, Bailey McPherson, councillor Ross and councillor Scott wish to speak.
Okay Bailey Keenan. Bailey Keenan, you okay?
They're on mute.
Okay Bailey Keenan.
Hopefully we're there now.
I've got you, thank you.
Following on your tribute, I think that, you know, Dundee United's gain was perhaps Dundee's loss, given that Jim was able to walk from Dens Park over to Tannadice some years ago and then went on to be an excellent coach and an ambassador for the city. And he was a deserving winner of, or to be awarded the freedom of the city, given the accolades that he brought to the city. Recognised in football terms, as you say, domestically and in Europe. And many teams obviously think very fondly of Dundee United and their city because of that. I think the fair play stand came around because of the fans that supported the team at that time. And, you know, and clearly there because of the sort of manager that Jim was, he'd helped develop a lot of the youth into the teams that made a real difference at that time for the city. And, you know, homegrown players is probably where a lot needs to be now. And youth development is something that we greatly believe in. But I think a tremendous manager for the city, tremendous manager for Dundee United, an excellent coach, and it's a real tribute that he was from Dundee and, you know, my condolences to his family at this time. Thanks.
Thank you very much Bailey Keenan. Bailey McPherson?
Thank you Deputy Lord Provost. And I think, you know, I completely concur with everything you and Bailey Keenan have said. Few people are granted the freedom of the city and no one was more deserving of it than Jim McLean. I think we could all say a genuine legend who helped put the city on the map, not just at the sporting field, but on the map generally because of the huge success he had in his tenure at Dundee United. I read the statement the team put out after his passing and I was touched by one particular sentence in it which reads, "Jim was simply a titan of Dundee United folklore and cherished by the United family the world over." And I think that's so entirely true. If anyone will be long remembered and never forgotten in our city, it will be Jim McLean. And I think, like others, my thoughts are with his family at this sad time.
Thank you Bailey McPherson. I'll move now to councillor Ross.
Thank you Deputy Lord Provost and thank you for having a night on the agenda this evening for us to pay our respects to the great man that was Jim McLean. Football for me and my life through everything has always been my escapism. It's always been my favourite pastime. And I trace that back very much to being a child in the 1980s in Dundee. I was born in 81, so sadly don't really remember the league victory of 83, but I do remember some of the exploits of Dundee United throughout Europe after that. And it's just a real memory for me to, and happy memories to be excited about seeing the newspapers about the exploits of Dundee United and the things they were doing. And I think some of the tributes that have come in to Jim McLean from around the world since his sad passing. You know, Sir Alex Ferguson, who obviously, you know, needs no introduction, probably one of the best football coaches the world has seen in many regards, paid the tribute that throughout his whole career as a manager, the greatest adversary he ever faced in an opposing dugout was Jim McLean at Dundee United. The things that United achieved under Jim McLean are things that will never, you know, sadly, given the way football and elite sport is nowadays, I don't think that's something we'll ever likely see in this city again. And I think during the eighties, when Dundee was a city that, you know, maybe didn't have a lot of things to be happy about and prosperous, the exploits of Dundee United brought a bit of colour to the city at that time. And Bailey Keenan was right to point out that his career also took him a while at Dundee FC as well, because I think it's important that the whole city comes together to remember Jim McLean. And I think it would be remiss of Dundee United supporters such as myself to forget that he did have a career with Dundee as well. It's a huge loss for the city. He was a true legend of the game and he achieved something, like I said, that I don't think will ever be achieved in this city again, perhaps even in Scotland. So I will leave it there. Thank you Deputy Lord Provost.
Thank you councillor Ross. Mr. Many, can you remind me, I can't remember things more than three at a time, there was four names you gave me or any other ones that I've since joined?
Councillor Scott and councillor Rendall has also indicated she wishes to speak Deputy Lord Provost.
What was the last one there that cut out?
Councillor Rendall.
Councillor Rendall, I've got that right, thank you. Okay councillor Scott, please.
Yes, thank you Deputy Lord Provost. Just to say a few words on behalf of the Conservative Group, some of my greatest childhood memories are of watching Jim McLean's United and in particular, the great European nights at Tannadice, when we took on and beat the giants of European football such as Barcelona, Roma and Borussia Munchen Gladbach. I was also there on 14th May 1983, which was the greatest day in United's history when we won the league at Dens. And even 40 years on, I can still remember all the sights and sounds of that day like it was yesterday. And of course, that was the culmination of a season during which United had played some incredible football, including a 6-1 victory over Motherwell, afterwards Jim famously withheld the players' win bonuses, as he said, "They hadn't entertained the crowd enough." As many others have said, Jim McLean was a manager ahead of his time, a man who put Dundee United and the City of Dundee on the map. And he fully deserved to be made a freeman of his adopted city that he was so loyal to. He was a legend of Scottish football and we certainly won't see his like again. So thanks for the memories and of course condolences to the McLean family.
Thank you councillor Scott. Councillor Cordell, please.
Councillor Rendall.
Is it councillor Rendall's next, sorry?
Thank you Deputy Lord Provost. There's just a very quick anecdote. When I worked as an officer in the City Council, and I'm afraid I have to say I'm not a United fan, I'm sorry, my colour is dark blue, so the other end of the street. But regardless of that, when I left the council as an officer in 2000 and joined NCR, I went to Shanghai to a banking exhibition. And one of the first people I met in the hotel was a young steward who couldn't speak any English, but the one thing he said to me was, "Ah Dundee, Dundee United." So, you know, our fame went far and wide across the world. Thanks really and no mean feat to Jim McLean. I would just like to pay my condolences as well to his family. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Rendall. Mr. Many, am I missing anybody?
Councillor Mara, Deputy Lord Provost.
Councillor Mara, please, thank you.
Thanks Deputy Lord Provost. Just to add myself to the roll call of United supporters just so saddened at the loss of Jim McLean and to add my thanks to his family for all the sacrifices that they made in giving our football club and so many of us that genius and the many, many hours and great times that he gave us. Because, I mean, he brought the city and many people beyond the city great joy. I think he maybe wasn't a character that was often known as somebody who was joyous, but God, he made a lot of us very, very happy. And, you know, I did more growing up, I think, in the 1980s on the terrace and in the shed and on supporters' buses going around Scotland than I did most other places. But it was, there were phenomenal football teams. Watching your team play a European final in your home city, as I did, and watching Kevin Gallagher score that goal into the crossing the ball against Barcelona. And these are moments that I don't think this city will ever forget. For the adopted city of Jim McLean, his personality really mattered in our household. And I remember the kind of crisis when it looked like he might go to Rangers to become the manager there for the few days and my dad running out in the mornings to buy the papers to see what the latest on it was. But he said after that, Mr. McLean, that he couldn't do it to the people of Dundee because he loved us all so much. And I think so many people in Dundee loved him. So thank you to his family and our condolences.
Thank you councillor Mara. Mr. Many, is that the list? Do we have anybody else?
There are no other members indicating that they wish to speak Deputy Lord Provost.
Okay, thank you very much to everybody who has spoken. Mr. Many, if you'd like to take it from there, please.
Thank you Deputy Lord Provost. Welcome to this meeting of Dundee City Council, which is being held remotely in terms of section 43 of the Local Governance in Scotland Act 2003. All members in attendance are able to fully participate in the meeting, which is being recorded. Should any member need to leave the meeting for any reason, can they please use the meeting chat to advise of this? If a member loses their connection, they should make every effort to rejoin the meeting, but if this is not possible, the committee services officer will note their absence for the remainder of the meeting. If you have to leave the meeting due to a declaration of interest, you must remain out of the meeting until invited back in. Would all members please mute their microphones when not speaking to avoid background noise and turn off any smart speakers? Please start the meeting with your camera on. Your face will appear on the screen when you are speaking. If your connection is poor, you may wish to turn off your camera and see if this improves matters. If this doesn't help, you may wish to quickly leave the meeting and rejoin. If you wish to raise a point of order, ask a question, speak on any item or move a motion or amendment, please use the meeting chat. The chair will then invite you to speak. Would members of the press and public please not post messages on the meeting chat? Where items are for noting or where there has been no disagreement expressed, the chair will call for any member who has a contrary view to indicate this through the meeting chat. Otherwise, the item will be agreed. Please would members not use the meeting chat for any other purposes, as those joining the meeting by telephone cannot see the meeting chat and therefore will not be able to follow the debate. Although we are operating in a different way, this is still a formal meeting of the council and the committees concerned and the required standards of behaviour and discussion are the same as in a face-to-face meeting. Standing orders will apply to the proceedings and the terms of the councillor's code of conduct also apply in the normal way. Does any member have any queries regarding this procedure? There are no queries indicated Deputy Lord Provost, so I will now ask the committee services officer to take a roll call for the minute.
Thank you. Councillor Alexander?
I'm here.
Deputy Lord Provost Campbell?
Present.
Councillor Cordell?
Present.
Councillor Dawson?
Present.
Councillor Flynn?
Here.
Councillor Hunter?
Present.
Councillor Lynn?
Present.
Councillor Rendall?
I'm here.
Bailey Roberts?
I'm here.
Councillor Rome?
I'm here.
Councillor Ross?
I'm here.
Bailey Sawyers?
I'm here.
Councillor Short?
Here.
Councillor Smith?
I'm here.
Bailey Keenan?
Here.
Councillor Crookshank?
Here.
Councillor McCready?
Present.
Councillor McCarvin?
Apologies for him.
Councillor Malone?
Yeah, yeah.
Councillor Mara?
Present.
Councillor Richardson?
Present.
Bailey Wright?
Present.
Bailey Scott?
I'm here.
Councillor Hay?
Present.
Councillor Scott?
I'm here.
Bailey McPherson?
Good evening, present.
Councillor Duncan?
Here.
Councillor Murray? That concludes the roll call. Thank you.
Deputy Lord Provost, there are two items of business this evening. The minutes for information and record purposes.
Is this agreed?
Agreed.
Mr. Many?
And appointments outside bodies. A member of Dundee City Council has been invited to join the board of Dundee Pride. The city council's instructions are requested.
Okay councillor Dawson?
Thanks Deputy Lord Provost. I'd like to nominate councillor Lynn Short.
Are there any other nominations? Is this agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you Mr. Many.
Thank you Deputy Lord Provost. That concludes the business of the city council. Would you please remain in the chair for the meeting of the city council as Fleming trustees? Thank you.
Okay, thank you Mr. Many. Tracy?
Right, first of all, can I ask if there are any declarations of interest? That being the case, that takes us on. That being the case, that takes us on to item two, Fleming Trust audited accounts 2019-2020. You have before you two documents, the audited statement of accounts for the year to the 31st of March 2020 and the report on the Fleming Trust audited accounts for the year to the 31st of March 2020. Both of these items are for noting.
Thank you Tracy, are there any questions on the accounts? Is this agreed then?
Convenor. I'll put someone in the chat hopefully.
Bailey Keenan, I can see that.
It's really in relation to both items. It seems to be the case that the Fleming Trust has somewhere in the region of one and a half million in reserves and I'm wondering if there's any scope for it to develop further housing, given that it's, that grew somewhere in the region of £200,000 in a year. And can I also ask for a comment in relation to the 12 outstanding homes that haven't been built, given that it was a, it was a policy that was passed in 2015. It seems to have taken some six year for these houses to come into play or before they will be in play, because I'm advised that it will be this summer of this year before they're complete. That seems an enormous amount of time, given that we've allocated some money to build new houses within our own housing rent account. And you know I would like to think we could do things a bit quicker than that.
Thank you Bailey Keenan, can I ask if as an officer I would like to respond to Bailey Keenan please?
Convenor, I'm happy to respond. In relation to new build housing, that's clearly a priority for the Fleming Trust, but also the external wall insulation, so that's the priorities that are being focused upon at this point in time. But I'm more than happy to take that back to the trust that the committee would like to see further development of new builds should funding allow it. In relation to the 12 properties that are being built in Derby Street, that's obviously been affected by the Covid situation, but we're hoping that that will progress early for the rest of this year. So we're hoping to see completion of those properties fairly soon. I don't know if David Simpson wants to add anything to what I said.
Thanks, thanks Elaine, the only thing I would add is that the 1.5 million reserves, we're in discussions with the supervisory committee for the Fleming Trust at the minute and the cost of the 12 new build at Derby Street will take account of an element of that. So happy to take it back and have a look at whether any future plans can be financed. But at the minute while it has a healthy reserve, a lot of that as Elaine has suggested is fairly committed going forward.
Thank you, Bailey Keenan, does anyone want to come back in there? Bailey Keenan, we can't hear you.
I know that Covid has got in the way over last year, but the policy was approved in March 2015. You know that's really some amount of time, is there any reason why it's taken so long? And is there any lessons that we've learned, given that the housing revenue account now has money to spend on a new housing, that we can do things much quicker than, you know effectively these would take six year before the approval to happen. And given the number of people that are homeless in the city, that frankly, you know, doesn't reflect well on us as councillors.
Would an officer like to respond to Bailey Keenan please?
Convenor, I'm happy to take that issue back and speak to officers in relation to any lessons that may be learned and respond directly back to Bailey Keenan, once we've had a chance to look at that in more detail.
Okay, thank you Elaine, thank you. Do you want more point?
No, thank you.
Thank you, thank you everybody, are there any other, anybody else want to come back in? Roger, is that, who have you got there? Anybody there Roger?
Deputy Lord Provost, there are no further indications of members who wish to speak.
Thank you, is this agreed? Okay, thank you, agreed, Mr Many.
That concludes the business of the City Council as Fleming trustees Deputy Lord Provost.
Okay, thank you, thank you everybody, good evening.
The next meeting is the Community Safety and Public Protection Committee.
Okay, welcome to the Community Safety and Public Protection Committee, Mr Waddell.
Thanks very much Convenor, firstly are there any declarations of interest? And there being no declarations, it takes you onto item two, which is Dundee Community Safety Partnership Commission Budget. The committee has agreed the recommendation.
Well I think this is a welcome report and we'll just crack on with questions if we may, I think Bailey Wright and then Bailey McPherson.
Thank you very much Convenor, can I say I welcome this report? But perhaps the officers could give us a little bit more information about the personal safety alarms, the target and hardening situation and the Scottish fire and rescue, on how the money is spent, what you buy, how it's distributed and how successful it's been.
Is that Tom or Elaine want to come in on that one?
Convenor, Graham Mackenzie who's the service manager is on the call, so I'll ask Graham just to provide a bit more detail to Bailey Wright on that item.
Thank you. Thank you Convenor, Bailey Wright, the items purchased are, really take two streams. One is reactive procurement of equipment following incidents. Now those incidents may either be fire related, so unfortunately sometimes we experience individuals who are subject to attacks by people putting, say for example burning materials through letterboxes. So we have devices that can assist with that. Towards personal alarms tend to be in part reactive, but also if an individual has been either threatened or subject to criminal behaviour, we have a stock of both personal attack alarms as well as window alarms if vulnerable individuals have been subject to break-in. And these items are procured and distributed, a combination of a needs-driven basis following an actual incident and then stops held for either both fire and rescue service and the police service to draw upon. In terms of their effectiveness, I'm always mindful that it's sometimes hard to prove that the installation of these devices have prevented further instances. But what we do monitor is individual satisfaction with the placing of such protective devices. Last year, a year before, the Evening Telegraph ran quite a large piece following a community safety warden who was installing protective equipment following concerns being raised about a break-in to an elderly vulnerable individual in the city. So I think their effectiveness is most accurately gauged by the fact that individuals are not coming back to us once those devices are placed there, we're mostly able to eradicate repeat offences. But they do form part of an overall strategy, there are local multi-agency meetings that are still meeting regularly to identify vulnerability. And so it is one tool in a wider armoury to try to help vulnerable people in the city.
Thank you for that, but I really feel that this is a good service and the money is well spent, considering you take, the safety officers have gone out round the shelter complexes into other groups, given these individual people, the safety alarms, and I think as far as I'm led to believe, they have worked very successfully and people who have had them actually like them and are happy actually to have them on their person or whatever it is. So I think it's a good use and it's something we should be quite proud of. Thank you.
Thank you for that Bailey Wright, Bailey McPherson.
Thanks Convenor, my question is just really about the timing of the report. This is the commissioning budget for 2021 and we're actually into the last quarter of 2021. And so given that these are proposed allocations, are we saying that this money is all being spent in the last three months? Now if I take an example that's on the list in appendix one, the safe zone bus, which I think we all think is an absolutely excellent initiative and we're all supportive of. It talks about, this is funding for 2021 to keep the bus on the road throughout the year. So my question is really around, I think sadly given the Covid situation, the bus won't have been on the road during 2020 or at least most of 2020. So I'm just really wondering why this report's coming up now and not far earlier in the financial year 2021? And if we are confident that the funding that we agree to tonight can actually be spent, much as, I wouldn't say for a moment, it's not worthy, of course it's worthy, these are excellent initiatives. I just want some reassurance, well some clarification on the timescale and some reassurance that the funding will actually be spent during the 2021 financial year.
Thank you for that, Tom, can you address that point?
Yeah, thanks Convenor. Yes, I mean we contribute to the running of the safe zone bus for example on an annual basis. So that money will go to the safe zone bus, there'll be costs associated with that and it's being used in a different way this year. So and the other projects that have applied, the two projects that have applied, we will allocate that money to them and that will be in their accounts for this financial year. So normally we would bring this report to committee much earlier than the year, that's caught up in our changing, you know, the way we've needed to operate during Covid and the attention of officers being diverted to that. But we will distribute the money as set out in the report before the end of the financial year and support these good projects.
Right, it strikes me, I understand obviously we've had a very challenging year, indeed the world's had a very challenging year. And I suppose the point fundamentally is that I presume that although the allocation will now be made, there'll be no requirement for those receiving it, they've spent it by the 31st of March, because our timescale shouldn't really cause them any difficulty, because quite clearly we are very, very late in allocating this with less than three months to go in the financial year. So I presume Mr Sterling, it is the case that the allocation once made, it will be those receiving it to use it in a reasonable time, but with no requirement to absolutely have had it spent by the 31st of March.
I think that's the case Bailey McPherson. I think the projects that we're supporting are ongoing projects and it's our contribution to them, so they're definitely projects that are underway. The spend on the equipment that we do, that's a bit more in our own control, so we can manage that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you Tom, as Bailey McPherson said, I think it's a very positive report with very worthwhile projects and although seemingly small amounts, they do disproportionate amount of good in the community. So with that, is this report agreed? Thank you, Mr Waddell.
Thanks Convenor, that takes you onto item three, the Adult Support and Protection Committee Independent Convenors' Biannual Report, is items for noting.
Okay, now items three and four will be introduced by Elaine Torrance in her capacity as independent convenor of the Dundee Adult Support and Protection Committee and independent chair of the MAPPA Senior Oversight Group respectively. So if I open the floor there to Elaine and then if there are any questions afterwards, I'm sure she'll be happy to take those.
Right, thank you councillor Cordell, and thank you for the opportunity to present the independent convenors' biannual report for 2018 to 20. There's a Scottish government requirement for a report to be produced every two years and this is this report. But we do produce an annual report for the committee which you saw in 2019. The main aim of the Adult Support and Protection Act of course is to keep adults safe and protect them from harm. This report contains an update on activity by the committee as well as the improvement actions detailed in the last report. It is the multi-agency report and it identifies the progress by all agencies, including NHST side, the police and of course our partners in the third sector. You'll see in the report there is some data that is presented which is about, you can see increased activity. The police continue to be the main referrer and you can see some of the types of harm that have been identified and supported, people supported in Dundee. And there's been significant improvements in various areas in terms of the things we said we would do. So collation and use of data, there's been a real improvement in that particularly during the Covid pandemic, because we've been very keen to track that we haven't lost people and we've been really tracking the referrals to make sure that we're able to support people in the same way we've prior to that. We've done some case file audits and we're taking forward actions out of that. Self-evaluation activities for the committee. We've been working hard to engage and involve people with lived experience in the work of adult support and protection and listening to their voices and learning and development training opportunities. And there again continuing through Covid, really moving online, so you can be reassured that people are getting those continued opportunities. The report also highlights future activities in the development plan, which is at the end of the report. And you can see there that we're continuing to capture and record outcomes and improve that process. Ongoing audit activity and development, further development of the risk register. And so a lot of activity within the committee. I'd like just to note that the report does cover the period to March 20, which was the beginning of the impact of the Covid 19 pandemic. However, I'd like to reassure the committee and members that we have been meeting more regularly and to ensure that from a multi-agency focus on protecting adults continues during the pandemic. And key to this has been sharing information, identifying and managing key risks, raising the profile of adult protection to the general public, for example making people aware of scams that may be happening locally. And we continue to monitor this. For many people it's been a difficult period in terms of loneliness, socialisation, social isolation and the impact on their mental health. So as a committee we've been trying to monitor that and support people where appropriate. We also recognise the great impact and work of the staff across all the agencies and I would like to thank all of those and all our partners in continuing to keep adults safe here in Dundee. So a lot of work, a lot of activity and reassuring the committee that we are progressing and keeping a close eye on the pandemic and that will be detailed and more detailed in the next annual report that we present to you. So happy to take any questions if there are any from any members, thank you.
Thank you Elaine, we have questions from Bailey Wright, councillor Duncan and Bailey Keenan in that order, Bailey Wright.
Yeah, thank you very much Elaine for your report, I really welcome it. And I know the huge amount of work that's actually done and the service itself is well appreciated. The management of high-risk offenders is obviously very challenging and it's good to see the arrangements outlined here again in the report. And I'm glad you spoke about the pandemic, because I was just wondering if you're aware, if your staff are well supported and have they been well supported during this time? But I have to say that two years is a long time to actually wait for information. Do the government have any plans to make this an annual report? I do know that you work under the rules of the act. Do all the 32 local authorities do similar jobs in the way that the, you know, they lay the plan out? And do you have any input into the layout or indeed the subject matter?
Okay, thank you. I'll try and deal with some of those questions. In terms of staff support, I think there has been work done to make sure that there's some feedback from the staff and perhaps some of the other officers on the call can talk a little bit more about that. But as far as I hear, I think staff have been well-supported. But you're right, it is a difficult time for all of the staff at the present time. In terms of the annual, the report, yes, it is a biannual report. I've not heard anything about that becoming an annual report from the Scottish government point of view. But we do present an annual report to yourselves. And I hope that that kind of gives you assurance that things are progressing during that period. I think there's a lot of activities underway at the minute nationally to review the adult support and protection legislation. And it may be that there's some changes from that, but I'm not hearing anything at this present time. In terms of the layout, there is a format that's, that all committees are meant to use. But I don't think that that means that we're constrained in what we can put locally because I think local information and local data is really important. So I think, you know, we can do what we can within the framework. And hopefully this report gives you a flavour and gives you the information you require here in Dundee.
Yeah, thank you, Elaine. It's actually good to hear you saying that because I would hate if you had seen an issue that needed to be brought to light and you weren't able to do that. So I'm pleased that you've said that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Duncan?
Thanks, convener. Sorry, I thought it was councillor Malone first.
Yeah. No, it's, as is Billy Wright, councillor Duncan, Bailey Keenan and councillor Malone in that order.
Okay, sorry, convener. I'll just go on with my question then. It relates to page 21 of the report. And although there's a lot of good stuff in this report, there really is. I was a bit concerned about the reference to the lack of management oversight. And I wondered what assurances can we take tonight that that's actually improved?
Thank you. We've got Andrew Beckett on the line that actually did that piece of work for us. I don't know whether, Andrew, you wish to comment on that. Obviously, management oversight is really important and we are actually making a few changes in terms of that. But Andrew, did you want to make any comment on that?
I, sorry, I take it this is with reference to some of the review material we've done in terms of case file audits and recognition in terms of the, you know, the content. Certainly, we are partly through the Transforming Public Protection Programme, which is quite an ambitious review of how we actually, the direction that we're moving in in terms of the protecting people agenda. Now, some of the actions that we have in respect of oversight are relating to first-line managers' provision of supervision, the recording of auditing of workflows and the quality of data recording, so that it's not something that we actually are just doing once a year. It's something that's actually built into almost like the daily work of practitioners. So managers would actually have a regular oversight and regular commenting on the nature, quality and level of work that's being undertaken. So actually, you're right in highlighting this as an issue, but we've actually moved on since that was highlighted and have actioned that to build that into part of the processes across the partnership. And I would like to suggest that when we come back next year with an annual report, we'll be able to demonstrate the impact that those actions have had.
Okay, I'm reassured by that because I was concerned to read that there were several instances where there was absolutely no evidence that wine managers had actually read the cases. So I hope that we can be reassured that we've moved on from that.
I would just say as well that it is the evidence. I think when we talk to people, they say they have, but we need to make sure that's evidence. We are welcome on that just now. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Elaine. Bailey Keenan?
Convener, councillor Malone was in front of me, but he did sub, loaded twice. You want to take his question first or you want me just to go for it?
I've given the order, Bailey Keenan, so if you just want to go ahead, thank you.
Elaine, thanks very much for being here tonight. And, you know, being here tonight's obviously changed the question that I was going to ask. You mentioned that there'll be a further report coming from yourself that's a bit more up-to-date than what we've got. When can we expect to see that report cancelled? Because when I look at this report in pages like, I think it's page seven of the report or page 17 if we've got them marked up, it's making references to the changes in Police Scotland and the eight forces being united into one. You know, and that happened in 2013. So it leads me to believe I'm reading a very old piece of material. And I'm sure that, you know, we're here to try to help you do the best job you can for the citizens of the city. So maybe you could elaborate a wee bit more on what we could expect to see coming within your next report? Because I've, you know, I've got my own concerns about, you know, have we protected people when we've allowed them to go out of hospital and care homes with Covid? And what's the issues around domestic violence that we're seeing that there's an increase on when we've been in lockdown? So, you know, perhaps if there's any comments that you can make on that, but, you know, I had real concerns about the report when I mentioned Police Scotland, given that it's eight years ago and it would have been in the melting pot for a considerable amount of time before that.
Yeah, thanks for that comment. I think the very beginning of the report is more contextual information, but I take the point that it perhaps leads you down a different track and we should get that up, that first little bit updated. In terms of the, in terms of the next report, it's actually probably due about this time next year. But I think that if you wish to get a more updated report about Covid, if that's something that the committee would like to see, we could certainly present that. I mean, the committee have been looking at the impact on social isolation, on people, you know, making sure that people have got the right support. And you're right to say that care homes has been a big, big issue. And it's very high up on our risk register in terms of risk management now. Diane McCulloch's on the call and I know she's been dealing with that particular issue very, very closely. But rather than, if the point you're making is you'd like to see something more quickly than this time next year, we could certainly look to bring something more detailed around our response to Covid, if that would be helpful. And Diane, I don't know if you would like to make any comments particularly on the care home issue?
Yes, thank you, Elaine. I mean, obviously there have been reports which have come to committee previously, which covered issues in terms of Covid and also care homes. I think we're more than happy to keep trying to provide information to elected members regarding this and giving up-to-date information through some of the briefings that we've been doing. I think the point you make though, Bailey Keenan, about the timing of our reports is really quite tricky to manage because we work to the Scottish government's timescales in relation to providing information around the adult support protection reports. And that tends to drive the timescales in which these come to committee. But I'm sure we would be able to do something additional in the interim.
Convener?
Yes, Bailey Keenan?
Can I perhaps suggest that we will look to bring forward that report as timmy as possible? I mean, I get the, I get the fact that we've received some information in different forms in regards to adult protection or, you know, police reports. I think it would be a bit comforting to know that there's an independent chair looking at that as well. And, you know, given, it would be better to have a much earlier understanding of the issues that are facing the city in relation to protection of people so as that we can best support the work of the chair. So if we could arrange for that to be as timmy as possible, rather than have to wait a year, you know, if it was in the next couple of months, that would be really appreciated.
Thank you, Bailey Keenan. I mean, we've certainly heard there that there is a willingness to bring something forward. So I'm sure officers and Elaine have heard that that is the wish of the committee. And as you say, the more information we have to help deal with these situations, the better. So if that is all right with you there, Elaine, and I know Diane.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, councillor Codel, we believe that there's a report due in March anyway, which would hopefully cover some of this. So we'll make sure that we've covered the issues that are raised.
Okay, thank you very much. Councillor Malone?
Thank you, convener. I want to turn to page 13, page 10 of the report itself. Where it talks about the referrals of people who are being vulnerable. And I appreciate that Elaine's actually made comment about the nature of Covid and the impact that's going to have, particularly in areas like food poverty and fuel poverty and that the impact that will have on the most vulnerable citizens. I'd just like to take the opportunity, convener, if I may, to congratulate Samantha Bruce of Food For Thought Charleston and the Lockie Food Labbers for the work they've been doing in supporting the communities in food poverty. She is now kind of taken up her office as Citizen of the Year. And I would like to add my congratulations, as many others have, for that post. I'm talking, I'm asking this question really in the context of a couple of cases I've been involved in over the festive period. And certainly one that was highlighted in the Evening Telegraph of a very, very vulnerable adult in their son. And the absolute lack of basic provisions in terms of food, electricity and decent housing. I've spoken to that citizen and it kind of reflects my concern, not my concerns, but my interest in the overall of others, where it talks about referrals, where we see that three people have self-referrered and 11 families have referred. But that's just in that table itself. The report talks about the growing increase in vulnerability of adults and talks about the many thousands of cases. And it seems to me that figure is very, very small in terms of the reportage. I don't know whether or not there's an accessibility issue here, whether or not we can better the signal and highlight the areas where people can go to get the support. But I think that what we are seeing is a bit of a crisis developing in adult support. And I was just wondering what steps are being taken or what initiatives might be brought forward to try and improve the accessibility of information for vulnerable adults. So we see that figure rising much more, particularly the figure around families. Only 10% of that table, the referrals come from families. But again, that's in the context of many thousands of cases that are being reported across the world. So I'm just basically want to ask, is there any steps being taken to look at what we do and to see how we can improve the accessibility of information for vulnerable people?
Yeah, I think there's two points that you're raising there, which are very pertinent. One is the definition of adult support and protection is quite narrow. There's a three-point test, which I think is laid out in the report. But you're right, in terms of the number of referrals that come through. Now, a number of those are very general welfare concerns. And that's the point that you are making is how do we make sure that people know where to go and how to access the right support? And I think there's been a lot of work done to do that. You're probably right as well that the number of referrals that we get, which is for adult support and protection, there's probably more general referrals coming into social work or into other kind of areas. Again, Diana, you may be a bit closer to the more general support that is around, rather than the specifics around adult support and protection because we're very keen to make sure that we do pick those up and that we have proper systems in place to ensure that people don't get into a crisis in the first place. That's the best approach.
Yes, thanks, Elaine. Yes, I think probably an understanding of the data because most of our referrals come from the police. And what we know with a lot of those referrals that they come through that are actually welfare concerns. Now, a lot of the people who come through that route may be known to us already and therefore getting the support that they need, but its incidents are happening and that we're picking up. And I think that's why quite a few of the numbers actually go through to meet the three-point test and to follow the actual adult support and protection information. I think it is really tricky in terms of the advertising of our services. Certainly, we get a lot of referrals through elected members for people who are approached by their constituents asking for support and help. So there is something in there that means that people are not clear about the ways in which to seek that support. We have information which is on our website in terms of Dundee City Council and also the Health and Social Care Partnership. But it may be that there is more work that we need to do to actually publicise and support and make available and make clear what support it is that people can get. A lot of the people we pick up through a point of crisis and it would be good if we could pick people up an earlier stage before they get to that stage. But actually, I think the reality is people don't want to seek help until they absolutely have to. And so that tends to be the point at which we are picking people up in terms of our services. I think in relation to some of the issues you're raising, councillor Malone, in relation to both food and poverty, they span much wider than the Health and Social Care and Adult Support and Protection Services. And so therefore, it's about how we, right across the council and our partners, make sure that the right information is given to people at the right time.
Thank you. Diane, councillor Malone, are you wishing to come back in? I think you're still on mute, councillor Malone.
Yeah, I am. Thanks, Elaine and Diane, for those, that feedback has been most helpful. I guess in one of the cases I was talking about, when I actually asked the constituent why she hadn't looked for help, she just didn't know how to. It wasn't that she didn't know where to, it was she didn't know how to. And I think we often think that people have agents, particularly when it comes through electronic media for contacting for support. But I think those answers were really helpful. There's a lot of feedback here. I forgot to mention in my list of gratitudes, I'd like to thank David Simpson and the housing team for the immediate intervention and support of their constituent. And her situation is much, much better in terms of the housing that she's received.
Thank you. Councillor Flynn, you were next.
Thank you, convener. I think Diane's kind of touched on the just-in-my-question anyway with regards to the number of concerns that are reported. It's very much biased towards the police reporting. Can I make a bit of clarification? Because it does say in the actual script on page 19, inside the graph, this identifies an area for development in the coming year. Would I take that to be that it's more clear about the details of the concerns that have been reported is going to be developed? Would that be correct or not?
Yeah, I think that is correct. I think the main route is this route. And it's not always the most appropriate route for adult support and protection. So we're going to try and do that to make it clearer which route to take. So that's a piece of development work for this next year, absolutely.
Okay, thanks very much for that. I hope it's clear.
Thank you. I don't think there are any more hands raised for that one, so is that agreed? Thank you. Mr Waddell?
Thanks, convener. Item four then, before these arrangements for managing high-risk offenders, committee's asked to agree the recommendations.
Okay, back to you, Elaine.
Back to me again, thank you. Okay, just a few words of introduction. So thank you for the opportunity to present. This is going to be my last annual report, which is detailing the work of the Tayside Multi-Agency Public Protection Group because we have a new independent chair, Alan Small, who's now been appointed. And he will be taking forward the actions highlighted in the report. And I understand is attending tonight in the background as well. So this report covers the period, the 1st of April 2019 to the 31st of March 2020. And it details progress on the MAPPA developments. And again, it gives you some key data for that, for the annual, for the year. So as of March 2020, there were 407 registered sex offenders within Tayside. There were 167 in Dundee. And 144 of those registered sex offenders are managed jointly by Police Scotland and social work together. But the majority are managed as police-only cases, that they're known as Level One cases. The report also updates progress on identified actions highlighted in the previous annual report. And these include an update on the progress of the two significant case reviews, which the committee were briefed on, members were briefed on at the time. Audits of cases, improved data collection and reporting. And again, we've been doing ongoing training, which again, we're adapting online in the current circumstances. The MAPPA Strategic Oversight Group have prioritised the ongoing scrutiny of actions from the significant case reviews. They're set out in the report, some of the actions that have been taken. And I've been very clear, I've been very clear, we want to ensure these are fully implemented. And not only just fully implemented, but that we're actually aware of the impact of that on practice and policies and procedures locally. And quite reassured that there's been an awful lot of work by all our partner agencies to make sure that those actions have been fully addressed and have been moved forward. We've got future actions for the committee that are identified in there, again, risk register work. We've got strategic plan, which lays out a number of key areas of work, training, further training and communication. So we make sure that, you know, we communicate the work and make sure that the public and others are reassured by the work that we're undertaking. Again, although it's outside the timescale for this report, paragraph 4.5 of the report does detail the operation of MAPPA during Covid pandemic. So the MAPPA Sog has been meeting more regularly to make sure that all the partners are pulling together. I can advise that all multi-agency meetings from Level One to Level Three have continued via teleconference. And operationally, all key agencies have undertaken a prioritisation exercise to ensure that the highest-risk individuals are subject to a proportionate risk assessment level of face-to-face contact. That's obviously been more problematic during Covid, but anybody who's needed face-to-face contact has, that has been provided. These arrangements continue to be monitored and we'll report on that again in the next annual report. People want a report before that, I'm sure that we could do that if that would be helpful. But finally, I'd just like to thank all the agencies involved in the MAPPA process, who really work very, very closely together. They share information appropriately and they do provide good monitoring and support to all the individuals that's subject to MAPPA arrangements right across Tayside. So a lot of work going on there and happy to take any particular questions on the report.
Thank you Elaine for that introduction. There is a question from Councillor Crookshank.
Thank you, Convenor. Elaine, you've probably answered some of the questions, but I'm going to ask it anyway. To what extent have MAPPA arrangements been impacted by the pandemic? And can you give me an indication of the type of supervision that has taken place? Thank you.
Okay, yeah, I mentioned some of the things that we've put in place, this prioritisation exercise and also all the meetings that have been held by teleconference. But Glynn, Glynn is on the call and Glynn's got more detail in terms of the operational work. So Glynn may want to add a few points just to what I said earlier.
Yeah, thank you Elaine and thank you for the question, Councillor Crookshank. Elaine said in many ways, MAPPA arrangements have continued as normal during the pandemic in the sense that we've done things differently. We've continued to provide the service, we've navigated around the restrictions of the pandemic and we've continued to deliver the same type of risk assessments and risk management that we did before the pandemic. Multi-agency meetings have continued, albeit on a virtual basis, as Elaine says. So we've continued to meet with partners to share information, to assess risk, to jointly develop plans to manage that risk. We've continued to supervise people proportionately. A significant number of people have been seen on a face-to-face basis, both in the office and through home visits. Others have been supervised remotely, digitally. Many have been supervised through a combination of both of those types of arrangement. And we've continued to deliver the accredited Moving Forward Making Changes Programme. One period during the pandemic, we did that on a small group work basis, subject to social distancing before and after that. And at the moment, we're doing that on a one-to-one basis. So we're using the same modules, the same programme content, the same materials to deliver that programme to registered sex offenders as well. And in terms of an example of the types of supervision we've carried out with particular individuals, well, that's Farid. So at the lowest end of the spectrum, for somebody who's assessed as low risk of re-offending, low risk of harm, they may also be subject just to monthly monitoring, but also subject to ongoing review and reassessment. And then at the highest end of the spectrum, those that are assessed as medium to high risk of re-offending and/or harm may well be subject to regular face-to-face contact, the Moving Forward Making Changes Programme. Additional legislative requirements, for instance, in relation to sex offender prevention orders where we can impose a range of conditions, where if they breach those conditions, we can arrest them. So as I say, to all intents and purposes, MAPPA has continued. We've adapted it, we've flexed arrangements, if you like, to suit the current sets of circumstances. But we've continued to risk assess and continue to risk manage people in accordance with levels of risk.
Thanks for that, Glynn.
Thanks for that reply, Glynn, and for the work you and your colleagues have done during this pandemic. Bailey Keenan, you got a question?
Yeah, in relation to the significant case reviews, there is a number of agencies that have had the recommendation that they needed to do something. So how do we seek comfort that all these actions have been in place and will go into place? And how do we ensure that, you know, there are no operating in a silo, that these things could break down again on a regular? So how does the quality assurance process work within recommendations mid to so many, many different organisations?
Thanks for that question. I've been very keen this year to make sure that absolutely we were on top of these recommendations and the actions. And obviously, at the Strategic Oversight Group, all the agencies, the prison service, the NHS service, all, the police, we all come together and we scrutinise the actions from the significant case reviews. And we did an additional exercise this year, which was we had a specific session whereby we really, really challenged the actions. So if somebody said to me, for example, "Oh, I've got a new policy", I was asking the question, "How do you know that your staff know about it? How do you know it's been implemented? Has it made a difference to the people on the ground?" And that was quite a helpful process because it made people really, really think about, have I, you know, have we done all we can to address these actions? So I feel confident that by doing that, we really have scrutinised and we're keeping a continued overview of this in terms of taking things forward. There are still a few national actions that are still progressing. But locally, I think we've really, really addressed the actions that we've done and we've made sure that we've asked the what-if questions, how has it made a difference? And how do we know that staff know about it? If we've changed, for example, any policies or procedures or if we've done training, has it made a difference to what people are doing on the ground? So we've really worked quite hard as a MAPPA Strategic Oversight Group to reassure ourselves that, you know, there has been a lot of work and positive work done to address these. Because they were, you know, recommendations were really important to get this right, to improve the systems here in Dundee that were being addressed and highlighted by particularly one of the significant case reviews.
Can we elaborate a wee bit more on that or get closer to it? Some people being allowed out of prison has probably been based on some objective decision-making somewhere along the line. How has that been, how can that be demonstrated that it's tightened up enough that we'll no see an individual similar back out on the streets in Dundee?
That particular recommendation is a national recommendation to review the whole process, the end-to-end process. And that has been taken forward nationally to review that whole process. And there's a lot of things that have already been done to make sure that that's been tightened up. But the whole procedure and policy is being reviewed at national level to make sure. Because there are obviously different approaches in different areas and that's all been tightened up in terms of that whole approach to that. I would just say, and Glynn will be able to support me in this, is that I think with Covid-19, that whole process of prison home leave has been reduced anyway because of Covid. But there is work absolutely to do to change that process and to tighten it up.
Would that be reported back through a further report here to let me know that that national reviews threw up some changes that, you know? I mean, I think that the significant case reviews might have happened in this area. So, you know, I'm hoping that there is that level of comfort we can give to people.
Yeah, absolutely. Glynn, I think's got an extra point there to make as well, Glynn.
Thank you Elaine. It's just to confirm with Bailey Keenan that home leave arrangements with the SPS from the Open Estate at Castle Hunt, they have been suspended during the current stage of the pandemic until mid to late February, at the very earliest. So they have been suspended presently and in the immediate future won't have anybody coming out on home leave in Dundee.
Thank you Glynn. Did you want to come in with anything further, Elaine?
No, I'm just going to see if, yeah, when the national report and the national changes, there will be a consultation on that when it's completed. Obviously, things have slowed down a little bit everywhere, including nationally. But yeah, certainly we can make sure people are aware of the consultation when it comes, yeah.
Thank you for that. So I see no further hands raised for questions. So with that, is that agreed? Thank you and thank you Elaine for your attendance tonight and your openness with your answers and taking those questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr Waddell.
Thanks very much, Convenor. Item five then, Before His Community Justice Outcome Improvement Plan 2020/2023, the Committee's Asked to Read the Proposals.
Thank you. I'm just going to open that one up to questions, if there are any. Councillor Duncan.
Thanks, Convenor. Just a quick question, I hope, with reference to page 12 of Appendix A. There's obviously quite a discrepancy between the treatment of males and females. On the face of it, there's potentially very good reasons for that, of course. I just appreciate some insight if officers could speak to that.
Convenor, we've got Karen Lawyer, the author of the report on the call. So I'll ask Karen to pick that question up.
Thank you.
Hi there, I'm just trying to find the page, page 11, did you say?
Page 12 of Appendix A.
Okay, just a moment.
Page 97 of the substantive papers, I think it is. And it's aligned with prevention and airway intervention figures.
Okay, and your question's about the discrepancy between males and females.
Yes.
I think generally speaking, it does tend to weigh more towards males being charged with offences. But I think certainly diversionary activity over the last few years has been increasing. So we will probably see a change in years to come and certainly months to come with regard to more females going down the diversion route.
I think that's really what I was driving at, that I think, you know, it does happen to be a fact of life that males get charged for good reason, frankly, far more often than females. But it was really the discrepancy and the approach that I was wondering about.
I think if I can ask Glynn perhaps, we're on the operational side of that, he might be better able to answer.
Thank you Karen. And thank you again, Councillor Duncan. It actually largely relates less to gender and more to the types of offences that people are committing at that stage of the system. So typically, women commit, for instance, more acquisitive offences that relate to substance issues and don't present as a risk of harm to anybody, either through domestic violence, general violence, et cetera. So they're the types of offences that more readily lend themselves to being diverted from prosecution. Whereas males, not exclusively, but certainly more often, commit much more serious offences and often, more often in greater number. So they tend to progress through the system, through court proceedings onwards towards a sentence more often than females do. I think that probably, hopefully, at least explains the discrepancy.
No, thanks very much. That's really the kind of explanation I was looking for behind the figures. Thank you.
Thank you Glynn. Thank you, Councillor Duncan. Councillor Mara.
Thanks, Convenor. I'm interested in the issue of unpaid work and community payback orders and how we can make those, ensure that these are operating, given the ongoing challenges that we have due to the pandemic. I just wondered maybe if officers could comment a little bit on that and then I'll maybe come back.
Glynn, do you want to take that one?
Yes, thank you, Convenor, and thank you again for the question, Councillor Mara. To explain that unpaid work was suspended nationally by Scottish Government at the outset of the pandemic, back in March. Understandably and obviously due to the group work element of unpaid work and requirements to social distance and comply with the public health requirements, et cetera. Since unpaid work has been reinstated, we have continued to deliver it, again, albeit on a restricted basis. So that we have continued to ask people to come into the unpaid workshop and do work subject to social distancing and a range of other public health measures. We've continued to carry out an albeit limited number of community-based projects. And we've continued to enforce orders in the way that they should be enforced when people don't comply with them. And just as an illustration of that, at the outset of the pandemic, the total number of outstanding unpaid work hours was around about just under 16,000. At the moment, early January at least, the total amount of outstanding unpaid work hours was just over 17,000. So actually, what you can see there is that despite the pandemic, there's very little difference between the number of outstanding hours at the start of the pandemic and the number of outstanding hours at present. And that's largely because, A, there will be fewer orders imposed by the court during that period. So we've had less orders coming into the system. And B, because we've continued to deliver those unpaid work hours when the orders weren't suspended. And in fact, over the period, we have delivered around about 4,000 hours of unpaid work. And obviously, that's much less than we would do ordinarily, but nonetheless, it is showing that we are continuing to deliver unpaid work, albeit subject to the ongoing constraints. And again, I said earlier that we've continued to enforce orders. We've also breached around about 30 people during that period as well. So where people have failed to comply, they've not attended once, twice and three times. We've returned them to the court to make a decision on sentence outcomes again.
Thanks for that, Glynn and thanks, Convenor. I suppose I'd been aware that I think it was 68 new CPOs with unpaid work elements had been put in place during the pandemic. And so I take some assurance from what you say in terms of we're still managing to process these. I don't think any of us would want to see these sanctions going by the wayside because of the current restrictions that are in us, as much as we also want to ensure that all the regulations are followed to ensure that people remain safe, both the people who are carrying them out and others, and that the virus isn't spread. So I take those assurances, Convenor, and thanks for that.
Thank you, Councillor Mara. Councillor Flynn.
Thank you, Convenor. Could I just ask a question of the officers with regards to the diversion from prosecution information? I think there's very good information within this report, but there's one I really think's missing is when it says an increase in 55 cases to 129. Can we take that as being 129 successful cases where we've actually managed to divert them from prosecution and actually get them into a positive destination?
Could you come in on that one, Glynn?
Yes, thank you again, Convenor. Councillor Flynn. It's the number of cases as opposed to the number of successfully completed cases. But I can say that there is also a very high successful completion rate amongst diversion cases. I think it's around about 85%. And then obviously, they also come with a caveat that if somebody fails to comply, then the procurator fiscal can make the decision to prosecute and take somebody to court instead.
Thanks for that, Glynn. It's very important, actually. See the difference rather than just see the diversion. As you see the success from that, so 85% I think is quite a positive number. Thanks again for that, thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Flynn. With that, I see no further hands raised or questions. So is that agreed? Thank you. Mr Waddell.
Okay, thanks, Convenor. Item six, Before His Community Safety and Justice Progress Report. This is for noting.
Again, I'm just going to open that one up to questions and it's Bailey Wright.
Thank you, convener. First of all, you know, could I ask, has there been any police or fire officers at the meeting tonight? It's just, there's been a few times where I felt if officers had been there, I would have asked questions of them in some of the other items that we've dealt with tonight. And if there's not any, could we consider in the future actually inviting them? I know that they can come if they've got an item, if they have a report on the agenda. But it would be useful where they're being mentioned and questions need to be asked of them, if they could be there to actually answer them.
I think it's a very valid point there, Bailey Wright, and we can certainly feed that into them.
I mean, I'm happy to raise that with Gordon Pride and I'm sure he'd be happy to support the committee on that. Well, thank you very much for that. But on item six, it's based as a report that says that levels are reduced, reduced levels of crime. And I've had a look at them. And on other reports that I've seen, there's no been a reduced level of crime in certain circumstances. There's actually been an increase. And that's one of the questions I would have asked, because there seems to be a conflict to a certain extent, certainly in my mind. And on page 109, I think it's 4.5.7, and they're talking about community wardens. I know that there has been a reduction in staff over the year, but I'm just wondering about community wardens, how many other wardens are likewise like police that are involved in this. And I'm really asking basically, do we have enough staff to actually cope with some of the work that has to go on here? Also, has there been any changes? What hours do they actually work? Has there been any changes to the hours that the community wardens actually work? Thank you.
Thank you, Bailey Wright. Sorry, I was going to say, Tom, want to take that one?
Yeah. Thanks, convener. In terms of the community warden service, we have reviewed it. Numbers have reduced over years, but we did review it and we have come up with what we think is a sustainable model in terms of two shifts that we run. And we have two senior wardens and seven wardens on each shift, if they're fully complemented. We are looking at, and we have discussed with staff and trade unions, amending the hours. And we also have some work to do to rebalance the teams. However, we haven't quite implemented that yet, given the position we're in, in terms of the COVID situation. So we're looking at an appropriate time in the coming months to look at these hours. And the plan is to bring the, essentially to bring the hours forward an hour, so that there's more warden presence in the sort of late afternoon, early evening period. So they can be out in the street at those times. At the moment, of course, the duties we're asking them to do are slightly amended. But I think, we think the model that we have now is a sustainable one. We've looked at it and the numbers that we have in place, we think is a good fit for what we need going forward.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Bailey Wright. Councillor Short?
Thank you, convener. It was actually just a comment with regards to the 4.1.2 and three, I believe it is, and the violence reduction unit. We've now come into the second stage of funding being available and having Inspector Lannan working in the area. And I'd just like to see how exciting that is a prospect, actually having not just the violence reduction people in the city and working with us, but also actually putting their money where their mouth is. And if anybody gets an opportunity, the Dundee Recovery Roadmap is actually being co-funded by the Violence Reduction Unit and Park Nursing. And I would definitely say it's worth downloading that app because it's got a whole host of information I think is really useful. And there was conversations earlier about vulnerable people. And there's a lot of information in there that's very easy to use and can be a great sign poster. And it's really exciting to see them actually getting involved in that kind of work. And I know that there's other work coming up to do hate crime and things that they've put money into. So really, really pleased that we've got another year and hopefully it will continue. And they'll start to make that big difference that they're hoping to do in looking at policing and the public health angle. So thank you and really appreciate that coming through.
Thank you, councillor Short. And on that enthusiastic note, I see no further questions. So is that report agreed? Thank you. That is the business. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, convener. The next committee is the neighbourhood services committee.
Good evening again, everyone, and happy new year to you all. I'll hand over to Mr Waddell for neighbourhood services.
Thanks very much, convener. Item one before you is declaration of interest. Are there any declarations of interest? There are bail or declarations of interest. I would like to advise the committee that requests for deputations have been received from Mary Harwood, Dundee Miley Support Group and Ian Ford to address the committee in relation to item four, Dundee Biodiversity Action Plan progress report. Is the committee minded to hear the deputations?
Yep. Okay. And that being the case, I think Mary is due to go first. Welcome again, Mary. We saw you at the end of last year, so it's nice to see you back again. So as you were here before, you know, you have seven minutes to speak. And then if you could just wait and see if there's any questions. So off you go.
I'm Mary Harwood, and I'm with the Dundee Climate Action Network tonight. And the Dundee Miley Group, which is part of the Scottish Wildlife Trust. I've volunteered with the Miley Group for more than 20 years. Over many years, I've witnessed the decline of biodiversity in our city. But now we have councillors who care and are doing their best to bring back the biodiversity that I enjoyed as a child. I say doing their best because they don't always get it right. The fencing at Brody Ferry Beach is a nuisance, but necessary to protect the dunes. That is the kind of thinking which should be used in all aspects of biodiversity. If it is needed, do it. It would seem though, that all the attention is given to the beach area in Brody Ferry. What about the Brody Ferry Nature Reserve? It has been seriously neglected with no work done in years, and flora and fauna are in serious decline without a ranger. More focus and effort are needed here for tackling ambitious vanity projects. Some people might think that leaving it to nature is good for biodiversity, but nature needs a helping hand to prevent losing sensitive wildlife. Issue compost bins to parks for youth on site. They could also be used by the wild or public for growing food. Volunteers are already involved in most parks. Support them. Councillors and officers should engage more with green groups, possibly host more meetings. The biggest threat to biodiversity in Dundee is the planning department. It's as if the only thing they care about is how many houses can be built on a site, any site. It doesn't seem to matter if the site isn't suitable. They only look at the area the plan covers. The planning department must prioritise the protection of the environment in the work. It's their statutory duty. It's good the operation managers have had some advice on managing meadows, but what about the other aspects of biodiversity? All involved staff and councillors should be given mandatory training on how to plan for biodiversity and why, then make sure that it's acted on. The number of trees being cut down is a serious concern. The planning department has allowed the removal of a shocking 316 trees to September 2020. Planning to plant a 321 new trees possibly puts as no mitigation. I cannot underestimate the value of mature trees to the environment, including the carbon capture and the wildlife they support. And don't forget the numerous benefits to mental and physical health. New trees need many years to mature before they can do the same work. Planting a young replacement tree is like putting a five-year-old to do an adult's job. The dead tree policy is not being enacted despite the curious importance of leaving dead trees for the benefit of struggling wildlife. And why is there no tree audit? There is no proper record kept. The report mentions the 16.5% of canopy, but not what is to be done with this information. I have heard of a new initiative, tiny forests, where small areas are planted with trees. I can think of a few areas where that can happen. The report tells me there were no tree preservation orders in 2020 because of COVID-19. Why? It's outside work. A tree officer on his own can do it, but we don't have one. This vacant role is typical of the lack of care to Dundee's much-needed trees and a significant concern. We need a joined-up approach to tree management and the protection of trees with a dedicated tree officer who can fulfil the requirements of the dead tree policy, the TPOs and audits. The planning department have been subject to their statutory duties since 2004, but have done nothing. Councillors should make sure that this is upheld. It must be compulsory for the planning department to ensure that swift and bat boxes are included on suitable buildings. Make it mandatory that planning decisions made by councillors cannot be changed by a planning officer. Providing advice is good, but sometimes the recipient just wants to ignore the condition on the plan. At my last deputation to this committee, nothing was taken forward. None of my suggestions were discussed or even listened to. So I have summarised my demands. Compost bins for parks, training on biodiversity, councillor decisions upheld, swift and bat boxes on suitable buildings, a tree officer for all aspects of tree management and protection, Brody Ferry Nature Reserve to be restored, and councillors to make public their biodiversity ambitions by signing the Edinburgh Decalibration. And all councillors can expect an email from Dundee Client Action Network. Thank you for listening.
Thanks very much, Mary. I think I have one question for you from councillor Duncan.
Thanks, convener. Mary, you've made a lot of the week, obviously heartfelt points there. And, you know, the one that I'm most interested in would be Brody Ferry Nature Reserve, not just because it's in my ward, but I'm there a lot. And it's a nice place. I'm just interested, and bearing in mind, to be fair to the council, COVID has impacted a lot on activities that can be done, you know, over the last year, be the paid, be the voluntary. But in your view, is the council doing enough to perhaps encourage more volunteers to help out at the likes of the Nature Reserve? Because I think that they have made efforts in the past.
Well, I don't know what the council are doing about trying to get volunteers for the Nature Reserve. But I do know that it's suffering a lot. And I do know, I can understand perfectly, the extreme difficulty it is to find volunteers. To get somebody to volunteer, you've got to be in the right place at the right time. And it really doesn't happen that often.
No, I think you're right. But I mean, if there were people who would be interested, when we get back to some normality, then that would be something that I'd like to see more of. And like I say, to be fair to the Rangers, I think in previous years, they have actually tried to do voluntary action days. So maybe that's something that could be, you know, more popular or better perceived, perhaps. I'll just move that with you.
But you're being posed, what really needed is a ranger to be there to help out with a team of volunteers?
Okay.
Does anyone else have a question for Mary? No. Well, thanks very much again for your deputation, Mary, and for the points that you've made very well. I agree that we don't always get it right, but we have to continue to try. So.
Oh, you're trying your best?
Yes. Okay, thanks very much, Mary. I think we now have Mr Ian Ford. Is Ian there? Not hearing Mr Ford. Can we see, is he on the participants? Mr Waddell, can you see him? Hello, Mr Waddell. Can you see if Mr Ford is available?
Convener, he is on the call, but he's muted.
Okay. Mr Ford, if you could unmute yourself so we can hear you. Just give him a second. Not sure if he's having any technical difficulties. Mr Ford, you just need to click on your microphone, which will unmute it, if you can see that. No, we don't seem to be getting Mr Ford. I see Martha Smarts on the call. I'm not sure, Martha, if you would be able to, if you would want to speak to this instead of Mr Ford?
Yeah, I just wasn't quite prepared because I know Ian's put a lot of effort into preparing a speech. If officers could just bear with it. I think, Ian, if you can hear me, on the top right-hand corner of your screen, there's a big button that's red that says leave. And then there's two icons next to that, and one of them is a microphone. That should be the one that you have to click that should let you unmute it. It's not that easy. It's not very user friendly for everyone, I think. It just takes a bit of time.
No, it's not. I know. Thank you for that technical advice, which is better than mine.
Let's see if he manages.
Yeah. No, still don't seem to be getting Mr Ford.
Convener, it's Greg. One other option is for Mr Ford to leave the meeting and then see if he can come back in. And his mic might not be muted because he is still shown as a participant within the committee tonight.
I think Martha's trying to give him a call just now. If we can just bear with this a minute.
Okay, I've actually got a pre-recorded version of Ian's speech. So if we can just wait a couple of seconds, I think I'll just play that, if that's all right with officers.
Is everyone agreed?
Um, thank you.
You have that?
Is that all right?
Does anyone have any objections to that?
It's okay.
Okay, thank you. As long as we can hear it okay, Martha.
Yeah, that's the only thing. Let me know if you can't hear it okay.
Convenor and elected members, I'm chair of the Friends of Riverside Nature Park and have had support from Dundee Climate Action Network this evening. I've been a conservationist all my adult life, involved in various projects over the last 50 years at least. I welcome the director's first progress report and would like to select a few topics from that report. Firstly though, I would like to mention COP26, the Global Climate Change Conference, taking place in Scotland this year. And would also like to urge all councillors to commit to signing the Edinburgh Declaration. The topics I've selected are staffing, training and grassland management. Regarding staffing, it is vital that we have sufficient resources to deal with this mainstream statutory duty. Any unfilled post should be filled as soon as possible, especially the tree officer post. I ask the elected members to demand that these posts are filled as soon as possible and also that there is a dedicated biodiversity officer, full-time post. Regarding training, I believe that it's essential that all departments of the local authority are fully aware of their statutory duty. And it's equally important that elected members understand what this statutory duty entails. The many green groups in the city are willing to share their expertise and help with any training. And council staff and elected members will realise how important it is for them to help raise awareness to the citizens of Dundee. Moving on to green space management, I've been in contact with Plantlife Scotland, the charity dedicated to conservation of flora. And they are more than willing to come and brief council staff and elected members about green space management. I consider it very important in this climate of continuing COVID lockdown and economic devastation that the elected members ask the director for a breakdown of the total costs to fulfil the green space management regime as it is at present. This breakdown should include all capital and revenue and staffing costs. It must be appreciated that the vast bulk of the work carried out is non-statutory and also carries a very high carbon footprint. So it's very useful to know the council's carbon footprint to be able to offset it against the city's tree canopy cover and the carbon capture. Last year, I welcomed the proposals for biodiversity areas across the city. And this followed positive comments during lockdown to the council about the way wildlife was flourishing. The consultation about these proposed areas is nearly at an end. And I would urge that the council remembers its statutory duty to enhance and protect biodiversity. I felt that the opportunity to change the management regime last year was squandered by the council. And sadly, this year provides us with yet another opportunity to take advantage and seize this opportunity. I would ask elected members to urge the council to seriously consider seizing this opportunity by turning their management regime on its head. Instead of mowing the whole city and leaving a few areas, they should consider leaving the whole city unmoaned for the season and selecting small areas to cut more frequently. Following Plantlife's recommendation of cut and lift once or possibly twice in a season, this regime would benefit the green waste actions in the report. And it would allow deployment of staff into other activities, such as planting fruit trees for sustainable community food production. I want to mention the Friends Group's successful partnership with Dundee Council, leading to an award of green flag this autumn with very high marks apparently. This is very rewarding and the judges made specific mention of the cut and lift regime employed. And this benefits the whole biodiversity of the site, increasing breathing skylarks in particular. The experience of myself, the ground staff and the managers would allow this management regime to be rolled out across the city very successfully. This leads naturally to discussion of wildlife corridors. Dundee Council produced an excellent document in 2016, the Green Network, but it refers to it as non-statutory. I would suggest this is indeed statutory and a wonderful document to implement as soon as possible. Finally, I would urge the council to continue reducing glyphosate and other herbicide use and to refrain from spraying in residential areas. My last words will be my mantras, statutory duty, cut and lift, and to say, let's make sure when the world's eyes are upon us at COP26, that Dundee can showcase its biodiversity.
And I think Ian is on the call now, and so we're both here to answer any questions. Thank you for being with us there.
Okay, thanks very much.
Can I check that you can hear me?
Yeah, can hear you, Ian, thank you.
Sorry about that.
No, that's okay. It's just one of these technical things we'll have to deal with in this day and age. Councillor, you've got a question, I think.
Was that me, Convenor? I didn't hear the, I heard councillor and then.
Councillor Flynn, I thought, had a question. Oh, sorry, councillor McCready, I didn't see yours. You go first.
Thanks, officers. I wasn't sure what you'd said. I have got a question to the deputation, if Mr Ford is there. Thanks very much for that, for the deputation. And congratulations on the green flag for Riverside Nature Park and the role that the Friends have played in that. I'm looking at page 18 of the report, which talks about the Greater Yellow Rattle. Now, I know we've spoken about this before, but, you know, it has been mown in the past. And, you know, I just think it's important that, you know, what's your opinion of where you are with council officers in terms of how we're not going to have any repeat of this endangered plant being mown at some point in the future?
Yeah, thank you very much, very good question. I have a five-year licence and three of those years have been used up. And in each of the three years, the Greater Yellow Rattle has grown and been mown. We did obtain a very few seeds from it this year because it grew again, thanks to the season. And I can get more plants from Battleby Nature Scots headquarters. However, I have discussed with Rod Houston, putting a fence around the area so that the mowers can't physically get in. So chestnut paling would be ideal. I was hoping it might be in the last financial award for Riverside Nature Park, but it isn't. But it would be good to get that before the spring.
Okay, thanks very much. I mean, I've got questions for, I've got comments later and might ask officers to comment on that. Thanks very much, Convenor.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else have a question for the deputation? No, not seeing anyone else. Okay, so I think Mr Waddell, I think we go straight to that item now.
Yes, Convenor, so item four before East End D is a biodiversity action plan annual progress report, which is for noting.
Thank you. You've got the report before you. We are making progress towards our biodiversity plan and this is updating people on that. Don't propose to go over the things that are in it because I see we've got quite a few questions. And obviously you've heard what the deputations have to say. Just one thing, though, that I would ask officers first of all. I think I know that we have been asked by the deputations to look at the Edinburgh Declaration on post-2020 global biodiversity framework from the Scottish government. And I have discussed that with officers. So Tony, first of all, would you like to come in on that and see? We think we can probably agree to sign that because it is about collaboration. So Mr Boyle, would you like to come in just on that point first of all?
Thanks, Convenor. Yes, absolutely. I noted the suggestion made in the presentation earlier, and it looks like something that Dundee City Council should have no problem looking at. If you'd allow me to look at that in more detail, I can see that it talks about a regional approach to biodiversity, which through our biodiversity duty report and our action plan ties up quite well with. So if you allow me to look into that, I'll come back with more detail.
Okay, thanks very much. Okay, so move to questions. Councillor McCready.
Well, my question was, one of the questions I was going to ask was, I was going to suggest that we did bring forward a report on that, on the Edinburgh Declaration. So I welcome that move by Mr Boyle. I think it is something, I've had a look at it, you know, and it has been signed by representatives of the Scottish government, but also representatives of the Welsh government and et cetera. So I think it is something that, you know, it's something that the government of Quebec and other places. So I think it is something that we should certainly be looking at. So I think it's something I'm quite keen that we do look at. I suppose my question then, Convenor, is back to the question I asked earlier about the Greater Yellow Rattle at Riverside Nature Park. Can we get an assurance that officers will try and work with Mr Ford and others in the Friends of Riverside Nature Park to ensure that there's no mowing incidents in 2021?
Yeah, I think we learnt the lessons from that last year, but I'll ask Mr Boyle to come in again.
Yeah, thanks again, Convenor. I think that's a fair point that's been made by Mr Ford earlier on. There has been some initial issues with this, with the yellow rattle being mown in error. I'm personally looking at that issue just now, and it's been followed up by the service manager and the area team. We're developing no mowing area zone maps. They'll be further developed and I'm going to put a dedicated senior officer responsible for site maintenance in the future to make sure that we only have a dedicated small works team. We have a specific and clear understanding of the specific maintenance requirements for that and the flourishing of that particular species. I know also Mr Ford's request for the chest pale fencing, and I know that's something that we're actively looking at as well. Over and above that, what I'm looking to do is make sure that our front-line staff get specific training to avoid any of these issues happening again.
Okay, thank you, Mr Boyle. Councillor Richardson.
Thanks, Convenor. My question is on an appendix to the use of herbicides, and it was mentioned by the previous deputation as well. I mean, I see that there has been, you know, quite a reduction over the last few years. However, it's still, the use of herbicides is still very high. And given how dangerous some of these materials are, as the previous deputations to the the biodiversity papers that the November committee mentioned, you know, I'd like to get assurance that, you know, not only are we monitoring it, but we are actually questioning the wisdom of using it in each and every case. And is there another alternative that can be used? Perhaps this is another area where training can be given to the team so that they are made well aware of the dangers and to the public, to dogs, et cetera. And I'd like some assurance that we'll reduce again further.
Okay, thank you. I know that that training is done, but Mr Boyle, if you'd like to come in and comment on that?
Thank you, Convenor. Yeah, as you outlined a second ago, it's actually a statutory requirement for all staff involved in the use and application of herbicides to be fully trained. That's something that happens. As I said, there's a legal reason that that's undertaken, statutory requirement. We've made a very specific commitment in the local biodiversity action plan to reduce herbicide usage. And what I'd ask members and councillor Richardson to know, as she's alluded to, that we have actually made a significant reduction in this area over the last two years. 28% drop in use when compared with previous volumes in 2018, 2019. I wouldn't perhaps agree with the thought that this herbicide is dangerous. It's used in very, very small quantities and we don't have anyone subject to acute exposure to this herbicide. Notwithstanding that, we're all about biodiversity and trying to reduce herbicide use in any form. I can tell you, if we were looking at the amount of herbicides and pesticides we used a number of years ago, we restricted that right down to just about one, and that is glyphosate. And we're actively looking at measures to reduce that. But we're also looking at alternative measures rather than using herbicides. And that includes things like, you know, whether we should be using any herbicides at all. And we've made some success in reducing applications in parks, cemeteries and green spaces. We'll continue to do that. We're also looking at active alternatives such as manual mechanical weed controls, the use of alternative landscape approaches, as the two deputations mentioned earlier on. The biodiversity naturalised grassland work is a case in point. We'll be looking at alternative ways of managing the landscape which support biodiversity and also reduce herbicide usage. So there's a whole range of measures, Convenor, that we're looking at. And I've got a confidence we're doing everything we can do. Just a note of caution, we've still very much got a requirement to use herbicides, but responsibly. So we're getting to a stage now where we will not be able to show a 28% reduction perhaps next year. But members should be assured that we're doing absolutely everything we can do to reduce the use of herbicides where we can.
Okay, thank you. You okay with that, councillor Richardson?
Yes, I'm fine, thank you.
Okay. Councillor Flynn?
Thank you, Convenor. Can I maybe start off with just a comment, just to say I actually welcome the report and I think it's actually really positive going forward. However, I'm a bit of a novice at this, and I think one of the deputations or both the deputations made a point of mentioning the training for elected members. Could I possibly ask that you maybe look to a ranger in the near future where you actually get some training and understanding of clearly what we're trying to do within the city? I think that would be welcomed by most, if not all, of the elected members going forward. The deputations actually raised a number of points, which I think we should probably address tonight with regards to the tree audits and the lack of staff and various other points with the compost bins, biodiversity, maybe if I can ask the officers maybe to respond directly to that either tonight or possibly in a response to elected members so we're all aware of. I think Tony's probably taken all the notes down anyway. But I think it would be actually useful for all, for the member to actually see what the answers to these questions actually are going forward. And can we maybe ask officers to maybe address the situation with another, a comment that was made with regards to the Brody Ferry Nature Reserve in particular, with regards to looking for volunteers? Can we maybe get some idea of what the officers do to help look for the creation of these community groups going forward and currently, if possible?
Thanks, councillor Flynn. I think some very useful comments there. Again, I don't know if the director wants to come in there or if it's back to Tony.
Okay, thank you very much, Convenor. Yeah, I'm happy to provide a written response to elected members in relation to some of the issues that Mr Ford raised this evening, particularly around the level of resources in relation to biodiversity. And I'm also happy to set up an elected member briefing on. And I'm also happy to set up an elected member briefing on biodiversity per se. And I'm happy for that to be a kind of partnership approach so we can look to invite other representatives along so that we can give as wide a discussion on that matter as we possibly can. In relation to supporting volunteers, as you know, you know, we are blessed within the city of the range of groups and volunteers that actually support biodiversity and our green landscape right across the city. And we do everything we can to try and encourage more people to come forward. But if there's anything that we're missing that our volunteer partners can come forward with ideas, then we're more than happy to look at them. Not just in relation to our environment staff, but also our wider community staff, if there's anything that we can do there that can encourage more volunteers to take part. But I know we are very blessed within the city on the numbers that actually do partake.
Okay, councillor Flynn.
Can I just say thank you very much for that and I certainly welcome your response earlier and I think it's actually highlighting the fact that we do have very good communications with community groups and we win awards, which highlights the benefits we're actually doing. Can I just make one final comment about the Edinburgh Declaration? Again, thank you, Convenor. I'm glad you're bringing that back to the report because I think that's something again we should be looking into. Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much and thanks very much Mrs Verlaine for those comments. Bailey McPherson.
Thanks indeed, Convenor. Can I just make a point of order before I ask my question? And that is, I have now raised with Mr Many on two occasions, the way in which some people are using the meeting chart. We have standing orders on this council and we see at the start of this particular item, people saying that they've got a question at item seven, item five, which we've no more reached than fly in the air. We've got people during a deputation asking that they want to make a comment later on in the proceedings. Now, it's quite clear, standing orders are clear. You ask question, you indicate you want to ask a question to a deputation at that point. You indicate that you want to ask a question to officers at the point at which you are invited by the convenor. And I'm saying this in part because it's impossible for you, convenor, and the other convenors to manage. And I have actually asked Mr Many if he can formally advise councillors to stick to standing orders. I'm not being moany about it, it's just this is supposed to be held in the same way it would be in the chambers. And let's face it, you wouldn't stand up in the chambers and say at the start of item one, I want to speak on item seven, would you? You wouldn't do it. So don't do it here. So moan over and can I ask my question? Sorry about that. I don't wish to be moany, but I just think it's not fair on the convenor and it's, I don't know whether it's just an attempt at queue jumping or it's just a lack of understanding of standing orders. But I think we should all understand it. We'll all be on the council, you know, long enough to do so. So I'll be quiet on that. My question I'll come to is really a point that was raised by Mr Ford when he was last up committee and Mary mentioned tonight as well. And that was about the engagement with Friends groups. Now, there was a commitment given because I specifically asked for that, Mr Boyle will recall in November. And we'll all have seen the letter, sort of the email that we got earlier today from Dundee Climate Action Network, saying that there had been no progress. Now, I appreciate it's not, it's only a number of weeks, but can I just have an assurance from Mr Boyle that we'll look to move this forward as soon as possible? Because I was very grateful for Mr Boyle's response, saying there would be, you know, a regular forum for engagement. I think that would be a really good thing because there's lots to discuss and I would just be grateful for an assurance that this will actually move forward.
Thanks, Bailey McPherson. And thanks very much for your comments as well because I definitely was a bit confused there about items. Yeah, it would be better if people stuck to standing orders. So can I ask Mr Boyle to come back to answer Bailey McPherson's direct question?
Yeah, thanks, Convenor. I think there is already ongoing dialogue with, and positive dialogue with Friends Group, but I'm happy to confirm that we will be arranging more of that.
That's fine. I think the point, Mr Boyle, was, I know there's been positive engagement over the years and I'm not suggesting otherwise. I think the point was something a little bit more semi-formal, that there was an understanding that, you know, so many times a year there would be an informal group, if you like, for want of a better phrase. And, you know, I'd be very grateful to see that move forward. So grateful for your response. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is councillor Cardell.
Thank you, Convenor. It's not per se diversity, but as we mentioned in urban orchard in the report, I was going to ask or make a request that we look into ways that we can use the fruit that is available on land. We use particularly the green circular. There are apple trees along there, there's brambles, there's raspberries, that we could do work that highlight that available free food. And also there are apple trees in many of our cemeteries and that fruit has a tendency to go to waste. So I would also ask if we could look at ways where maybe that fruit could be used in a positive way instead of just going to waste. If you go along the Arbroath Road, you'll see them just lying. Edsall Street in Brody Ferry, you will see fruit just lying on the street and I'm sure it could be put to better use. And it's just a request that we maybe look into ways that we could better advertise those free resources that we have, obviously in cemeteries in a respectful manner. Thank you.
I'm sure we can look at doing that. Mr Boyle, are you in agreement with that?
Yes, absolutely. It's already contained within the local food growing strategy, which was agreed at committee in August, Convenor.
Okay, thank you. Bailey Scott.
Yes, Convenor, I just wanted to ask about an item in the action plan in respect of coastal grassland at Brody Ferry Esplanade and the intention to transform amenity in rough grass into biodiversity coastal grassland. And there's an application decision imminent from Struth Strands and work expected to commence in 2021. When the council left some areas uncut during the first part of the Covid crisis and intended to introduce biodiversity areas, there was a mixed reaction to that. And I attended a couple of residents meetings on the Esplanade where someone from Environment Department was present and explained what was intended, which was well received, I think, when that happened. So I just wanted to check before this project goes ahead that there will be consultation on it and local residents and visitors to the Esplanade will have the opportunity to make their views known.
Thanks, Bailey Scott. Mr Boyle?
Yeah, I'm aware of the meeting that councillor Scott was talking about and Robbie Terrace and others. And it's very much the thought that we will take forward the analysis from the consultation which finishes in mid-January. And following that, there'll be local engagement with each of the groups and each of the areas.
Oh, no, I had taken from this action point that this was a different proposal to the two smaller areas of biodiversity that was to be left on the Esplanade. This seems to be a much wider project which would require consultation on this alone and not the two areas that I've already had discussions about.
Yeah, Convenor, happy to pick that up.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm not seeing any other questions on this one unless I've missed them in the chat up above. Does anyone have anything else? If not, can this report be agreed? Thank you. Mr Waddell, back to the agenda.
Thanks, Convenor. I'll take you back to item two, sanctuary infrastructure improvements. Committees ask to be accepted or offered as recommended.
This is just a report looking for approval for infrastructure improvements at Barnhill, Pecara Grove and Eastern Cemeteries in order to provide a safer environment for staff and cemetery visitors. Any questions on this one? Okay, can this report be agreed? Thank you.
Okay, item three before is play framework improvements. Committees ask to be accepted or offered as recommended.
And some more good news of play improvements throughout the city. I know that councillors have been sent further details of exactly what's happened to play perhaps in their areas. So I hope you've had a chance to read that. But this is about £320,000 worth of spend again to improve our playparks, which I think is important, given that we need the kids to get out and play, especially going forward. Any questions? Okay, can this report be agreed? Thank you, Mr Waddell.
Yes, thanks very much, Convenor. Item four we've dealt with. So item five then is the lasting block sales and committees ask you the recommendations.
Thank you. This is a report that I'm very pleased to bring to committee because it's something I've been concerned about really since I was elected. As members are aware, the right to buy council houses with ended in 2016. But at the council, we had a policy which was brought in in 2007 in this council where we were able to sell the last in a block of council houses if it became vacant in order to gain the capital receipt. And that was then used to increase the supply of council houses, including much needed wheelchair accessible housing. It was a policy that, similar to the shower charge in many ways, was brought in for a good reason at the time. But given that the demand for council houses is so high, I felt that it's important that we retain as much social housing as possible. And I asked officers some time ago to look at how we could do this. Obviously, it had to go slightly to the back burner because we needed to find a way to replace the capital receipt of approximately £150,000, which is received annually from the sales approximately of council houses and goes into the housing revenue account to fund this new builds. But there are details in the report of how this will be done. So I am very pleased to bring this to committee and I'm hoping that people will support it. So I think I have councillor Richardson first of all, the question.
Thank you, Convenor. Yeah, I also am glad to see that this report has come to committee. It's all very well having capital receipts and being able to use that money to build new wheelchair housing. However, we have made quite a lot of money. The £9.5 million over the period has been quite a significant contribution. And I'm just wondering, first of all, how many of these lasting blocks have actually been sold over the period? And also in terms of the figure, the £9.5 million, is there any of that fund still available that can be used to continue to support building new houses and available to help actually replace it and build more houses?
Okay, I'll ask Mr Simpson if he'd like to come in on that, please.
Yeah, I think I've captured those questions, Convenor. How many sold? 108? Have been sold, we've built 47 new build wheelchair adapted properties as a response. And we've also, I think the report spells out, we've also done some work to make some other properties more accessible for wheelchairs. There's now 16 properties where there's a ground floor bathroom or shower room. In terms of is there any of the money left? I think the answer to that is no, because as you might be aware, it's quite expensive to build wheelchair, fully wheelchair accessible properties. But we are looking at continuing to provide wheelchair properties through looking at the capital plan and looking at what monies are available and what proposals we can bring forward. Hopefully that answers the question.
So.
Thank you. And I do, just one further question about that. In terms of, you said it's very housing, sorry, it's very expensive to build these new properties, but you also mentioned that 16 have been kind of adapted from, you know, moving the bathrooms down to the ground level and adapting the properties for wheelchair users. I mean, councillors will probably be aware that quite extraordinarily in this city, we have a number of people with, you know, real problems with mobility. And obviously this is an area where I think is only going to continue to grow in terms of needing more of these houses. So is there any way to look at some of the other houses we'll have to see if these can be adapted?
Well, Convenor, if I can respond to that, we do look at adaptations and there's a reasonable budget for adaptations which include wheelchair adaptations where appropriate. We have looked at making sure that we do adapt properties where it meets the needs of the person. But sometimes the property has to lend itself to that. So as you'll be aware, we have relatively few problems with a downstairs bathroom. It is, it sounds like an excuse, but it's not that easy just to tack a bathroom onto a property. We need to have the space available and the usable space to convert it into a bathroom or a shower room. We do continue to look at every new build location though with our partners and the housing associations to look at there always being some wheelchair adapted properties, wheelchair suitable properties within all the new builds. So we are trying to make provision for the demand that's out there, but hopefully that answers councillor Richardson's question.
I think Mrs Verlaine, are you wanting to come in as well?
Thank you, Convenor. Just to add to what Mr Simpson has said, in terms of our new build programme, we do build to housing for varying needs, which means that the structure of the building allows for it to be adapted in a future point. So for example, downstairs toilet can be converted into a wet area if required. And there's a downstairs dining area can be converted into a bedroom. A lot of the structures are created to ensure that tracking devices, for example, hoist can be added in where required. So just to give that reassurance to councillor Richardson that, you know, in terms of the ongoing design for new builds, these are features that are factored in going forward to allow them to be adapted in the future.
Thank you, Mrs Verlaine. Are you okay with that, councillor Richardson?
Thank you, Convenor, and thank you to the officers.
Thank you. Bailey McPherson.
Thanks, thanks, Convenor. Like yourself, I'm pleased this has come forward. I've been on my feet, you'll recall in the past, expressing my concern about, I had no problem with the concept back in 2007 and it's had some very positive outcomes as we've alluded to. But my concern has always been, and Mr Simpson knows this full well, because I have on a number of occasions contacted him about particular, a potential lasting block sales, about the length of the waiting list in these areas and the diminution of the amount of council housing available in high demand areas. So this addresses that. But my question therefore is around the outcome of that. Now, the report indicates that the capital plan will be realigned. And I suppose my question is, what's the timeframe for doing so? And do we have a measure of demand so that we can be confident that a realignment of the capital plan will allow us to meet demand in future years? Because I presume we have some indication as to what likely demand is going to be for further wheelchair adapted housing, oh, sorry, wheelchair built or adapted housing.
Thank you, Bailey McPherson. Mrs Verlaine, do you want to come in here?
Yes, I'll bring Paul Thompson in to talk about the budgets, but just in relation to demand, to reassure Bailey McPherson that through the local housing strategy and through the SHIP, we do constantly look at demand and we do that in conjunction with Health and Social Care Partnership as well, just to make sure that we are planning ahead for the needs for the future. As has been highlighted earlier in the conversation at committee this evening, this is an area where there is growing demand and it's something that we are conscious that we need to keep on top of and ensure that the supply is coming through. But there is good partnership working to try and predict and assess that going forward. Can bring Paul Thompson in just to talk about the, how the budgets are prepared for the future?
Paul, do you want to come in?
Sure. Okay, thank you, Elaine. Bailey McPherson, I confirm in relation to your question on the budget that we're currently working through the draft capital budget just now that I understand will be coming to members for consideration in future months. At this stage, there isn't any reflection in that plan to take note of any demand related increase. Simply at this stage, all we have done is, and the draft papers at least, reflected the same level of spend that's already in the existing plan. So we've simply taken on board the impact of that loss of income. And to maintain that current commitment of spend, it would cost the additional borrowing costs as outlined in the report.
Okay, I'm grateful for that and thanks to both yourself and Elaine for these responses.
Thanks, Bailey McPherson. Not, oh, sorry, councillor Sharp, you'd like to come in?
Yes, thank you, Convenor. It's really actually from a fairness point of view. I came back to Dundee approximately 16 years ago and stayed in our private let, which was an ex council stock in Tulladelf, and then wandered around and I've come back into an ex council stock in Kerr's View. And 16 years ago, it was £300. And 16 years ago, it was £300 for a two bedroom with the same footprint as I have now, which is now over 500. And so the fairness angle is that if it goes into the private rented area, which the single sales would have done, then as citizens, we would be paying more if it's outside the council stock. So I really appreciate the fact that more people will have opportunity to stay under that socially rented council stock area rather than having to go out into that more market led. And I think that that's a really good thing to see and hopefully we will see more people being able to get housed in these properties when they come along. But obviously that depends on who leaves and who goes. So, you know, but it is a really positive thing and I really appreciate that you've brought it forwards. And I do remember being at one of our party conferences where it was put through as an amendment. So it's good to see that it's following on party policy as well.
Thanks very much for those comments councillor Short. And just to say that I have actually written to the minister, Kevin Stewart, just to see, to let him, to advise him that, I think we're probably the first council to do this, and just to advise him that this was on our agenda tonight and to see if there's any other monies that might be forthcoming to help us with the loss that we're going to suffer from not selling these houses. So I will keep you advised on that. So with that, oh, sorry, I have councillor Dawson coming in.
Yeah, convener, sorry for the short notice on that. I was just going to ask Mr Simpson if there is any intention to review how adaptations are done. One of the reasons I've always questioned lasting block sales is, quite frankly, I think some of them could have been adapted with a little bit of thinking out of the box, but generally the rules that we have in place sometimes don't allow it. But if you had that sort of thinking out of the box a little bit, I think some of them could have been easily adapted. Are there any plans to look at the adaptation criteria again with regards to this especially?
Mr Simpson?
It's not something that we've given a lot of thought to at the minute councillor Dawson, but we're happy to look at that. If you'd like me to have a discussion with staff to see whether there's any room for adapting the criteria, we'd need to look at talking to partners as Elaine mentioned earlier, because we do work very closely with Health and Social Care. So I can't really give you an answer tonight, but I'm happy to take it away and have a look at it and come back to you.
Yeah, that'd be absolutely fine. Thanks, David.
Okay, thanks very much. So with that, can this report be agreed? Okay, thank you, Mr Wardle.
Thank you very much. Item six, Pories Waste Infrastructure Improvements Report, you're asked to agree the proposals.
This is just seeking approval for some infrastructure improvements at our recycling centres and the purchase of some more skips. So I have Bailey Scott with a question.
Do you know me councillor Scott, convener?
Sorry, beg your pardon.
Yeah, thanks. No, it's just to welcome this report, convener. Mr Boyle might remember a couple of months ago, I got in touch with him because some of my constituents, elderly constituents, were having trouble in putting things into one of the ground level skips, because of course there wasn't a raised platform and they were having to push up, I think it was rubble, they were trying to push up and over, which was really difficult for most people, let alone an elderly person who didn't have the same ability as some of us. And so I'm really pleased to hear that, and Mr Boyle had said he would be making these improvements, I'm really pleased to hear this is now coming to fruition and putting in the access gantries, which of course would help my constituent very much and all the other improvements too. I think it's great to see that and I think it will be a real help for my constituents and others. Thank you.
Thanks very much for that councillor Scott. Not seeing any other questions, so can this report be agreed? Thank you, Mr Wardle.
Okay, item seven, Pories Tenders Received, and you're asked to agree to accept offers as recommended.
Seeking approval, as you can see, for tenders received relating to roof replacements at Maitland Street and in Dunmore Street and Craigmore Street in Kirkton. Okay, I have councillor Crickshank, please.
Thank you, convener. In relation to the roof replacements, I was wondering if there's been any efforts to reduce the carbon footprint, i.e. when replacing the roofs, consider using thermal improvements or indeed solar panels in consideration of the climate change and reduce the carbon print and helping families out of poverty, fuel poverty. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr Simpson, do you want to come back on that one or?
Yeah, thanks, convener. Yeah, I mean, I think in terms of carbon footprint, climate change, energy efficiency, we are, as committee will be aware, considering what our next options are in terms of replacement for solid fuel boilers, for instance, and part of that is looking at other alternatives and solar might be something that, I know we've tried it in the past in some of the houses in Kirkton as a pilot, but we could also continue to work with our colleagues in city development to look at what alternatives there are. So in terms of these tenders, these are really about required improvements to roofing structures, you know, life cycle replacement. But I think I take the point that councillor Crickshank makes about considering other related issues.
Mrs Verlaine, do you want to come in again?
Just to add to what Mr Simpson has said, that we do have solar panels on our multi stories. So, you know, and we did do a pilot a number of years ago in Kirkton, but it certainly is an area that we would want to revisit now that technology has also improved and reliability has improved as well.
Thanks very much for both responses. It gives me some comfort that it's on the agenda and you yourself, convener, are very eager about the carbon footprint and the reduction of the carbon footprint. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thanks very much for those comments. Councillor Short?
I will just send an email. I was going to ask about mixed tenure, because obviously it's easy to put a lasting commitment with regards to a capital project on a multi storey because underneath is everything that belongs to the one tenure. But if you've got a mixed tenure, so you could have owner occupier, private rented and council tenants under the one roof, so does that not make it a more complex arrangement for looking at things like that?
Yeah, see officers nodding their heads, Mrs Verlaine, yeah.
Yeah, it certainly is more challenging. As you know, when there's multi tenure, we've had issues in the past trying to get owners to support some of the improvements and investment. So it's something that we would continue to work at, but we also have had quite a lot of success with owners, I would say, and the private rented sector in working in partnership with us. So I would still hold out hope that we would be able to bring forward joint initiatives.
Yeah, I guess when you're putting on something like a render and there's funding, it's very different to a capital commitment, because usually it's almost a spend safe type of commitment when you're looking at solar panels, isn't it? Yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Councillor Keenan?
Convener, I'm just wondering whether officers think they'll be able to bring back something, a report back, because this is £600,000 worth of spend and we're just replacing like for like, you know, infrastructure besides, you know, we're replacing like for like. And I think we're missing the real trick in spending that kind of money and not making a real difference. And if there's no thermal quality, or additional thermal qualities built in, then I think we're starting to let people down a bit, given, you know, with the work across the whole of the council to reduce the carbon footprint and there's a great opportunity here, you know? I want to see people saying the best home and I'm sure everybody here does, but, you know, that's a lot of money that's going without throwing that additional bit extra. Perhaps it's even cheaper to deliver something that's more thermally efficient than what we are just giving a, I think it's a sort of concrete render, a concrete tile or something that's going to go back up. It's not delivering any thermal improvement to the house or reduction in fuel bills for the individuals that live there.
Do you want to come back, Mrs Verlaine or David?
Convener, I'm more than happy to take this issue off the table and look at bringing forward a report back to committee at a future date, just to outline the range of initiatives that we're undertaking in terms of our own stock to improve the carbon footprint. So I'm happy to look at that and come back to committee on that.
Okay. You okay, Bailey Keenan?
Yes.
Thank you. Councillor Alexander?
Thanks, convener. That's probably less of a question and more of a comment just in relation to that last point. And again, it might be useful at some point, I'm not saying it has to be, you know, in the immediate future, but at some point soon, it might be worthwhile just having, you know, a briefing or at least a briefing document circulated around councillors to illustrate some of the types of investment that have been undertaken in previous years. So I know, for example, because my parents are council tenants in Kirkton, that there was internal works carried out in terms of increasing thermal efficiency within loft spaces. So whilst the external might not be thermally insulated, there has actually been extensive work carried out within the properties and within the roof space to ensure that we are increasing the thermal efficiency of our buildings and addressing fuel poverty at the same way. So without, I suppose, knowing all of the information about each and every property, it might be just useful, I think, to illustrate that point and perhaps some case studies, Elaine, that we can demonstrate some of the areas in which we've improved council houses. So just a suggestion, convener, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for that. That sounds good, Elaine.
I'm happy to do that, convener, because as councillor Alexander has highlighted, there's been a lot of work done over many, many years in ensuring the thermal efficiency of our stock, both in terms of insulation, cavity wall insulation and external wall insulation, not to mention the energy efficient boilers that we've been putting in over the last 10 years have been significant in addressing fuel poverty within the city as well. So I'm happy to capture all of that within a report that comes back, just highlighting what we've achieved and also give you an outline of the direction of travel for the future.
Excellent. Thank you very much for that. So with that, can this report be agreed? Okay, thank you. And that concludes the business, neighbourhood services. Thank you.
Thank you, convener. The final committee this evening is the Policy and Resources Committee.
And like an efficient game of musical chairs, I shall take over. So welcome P and R, we'll just move straight on with the agenda, Tracy.
The first item on the agenda is declarations of interest. Does any elected member wish to declare an interest?
Bailey Scott?
Item three, convener, I'm assuming that your motion will include civil servants working in UK government departments. And if that's been the case, as someone who works for the UK government department, I would need to declare a man should interest.
Thank you very much for that, Bailey Scott. Appreciate your declaration. I see no other comments, so we shall move on.
That takes us on to item two minutes. You have before you the Pension Subcommittee and Pension Board Minute of the 21st of September, the Personnel Appointments Subcommittee Minute of the 11th, 17th and 20th of November, and the Personal Appointment Subcommittee of the 10th of December. These are all for noting.
Silence is agreement and I see no comments, so I'm taking that as agreed.
That takes us on to item three, public sector workers. This item has been placed on the agenda at the request of councillor Alexander.
Thank you. So yes, and it may not come as any surprise in terms of the contents of what's being proposed here and I'll ask committee services to share that. But just as a quick summary, you'll be aware that the UK government has suggested a public sector pay freeze is the appropriate action at this time. Personally, and on behalf of my group, I vehemently disagree and I think it's quite insulting of public sector workers at this time to suggest that they should be taking either a pay freeze or a below inflationary increase in their pay, given how hard they have been working over the last year in particular in response to COVID-19. Many of our staff within the council, but also public sector staff across the rest of the city and other institutions have dedicated themselves to protecting their fellow citizens and working tremendously hard. And I think we need to recognise that. Item three and item four are linked in many ways and we'll come on to discuss the contents of Bailey McPherson's motion. For this purpose, I'm asking committee to agree that that is not our position and that I should write to the UK government to make it very clear that public sector workers should be paid fairly and appropriately and that funding should be provided fully to the Scottish government to ensure that it does flow through to local government. It's absolutely essential that we receive that money, because we all know that without adequate funding from UK government, Scottish government and to ourselves, we would not be in a position as an individual council to address that ourselves. I think it's also really important just to reiterate that point, whilst we've all absolutely and rightly celebrated public workers, clapping does not pay the bills and it's something I'm sure we would all recognise. And that's why I would like the committee to endorse this motion and allow me to make those views very clearly to the UK Treasury. Now, I'm realistic that they're not necessarily going to bow to Dundee City Council's will, but I think it's really important that we defend the position of those public sector workers who have, as I've said, worked so tremendously hard over the last year. Bailey McPherson?
Thanks very much, convener. I'll be very brief and just say, having read your motion hugely supportive, I think it's absolutely appalling what has been, what is intended to be done by the UK government in relation to public sector workers, given the massive efforts that frontline workers have made during what has been an exceptionally challenging period and continues to be an exceptionally challenging period. The suggestion that there should not be a proper remuneration is quite wrong. So I'm hugely supportive of what you're proposing, convener.
Thank you, Bailey McPherson. Yeah, I think the phrase slap in the face has come to mind on occasion as well. Bailey Keenan?
Sorry. Convener, I think in general we would agree with your motion, don't have a problem with it at all. I suppose for the sentiment of, you know, you're asked upon the West Minister of Government to make the funds available, so is available in Scotland, but Scotland manages its own budgets. And I think that the expectation that you build within our staff is something that, you know, I think that we need to look very seriously as a council and honour it. And, you know, I think that the Scottish government can act unilaterally and deliver something that's a wage increase that's better than, you know, there is in previous years where they've said they've delivered better than down south. And now might be the time that they need to do it for the workforce here. You know, I think the workforce that we've looked upon very heavily are low paid and we look for them to go where there's been a lack of PPE and deliver services to individuals have to be commended. And I think it would be wrong for there not to be a recognition wage wise. Clapping, as you say, isn't good enough, but there is a duty on both governments to make sure that there's something worthwhile and indeed council to make sure that there's something worthwhile offered in a wage deal to people.
Thanks for those comments. Bailey Keenan, absolutely agree that there's a role there for Scottish government and I tried to make sure that that was incorporated into the text of the motion, because there is recognition that the UK government simply providing money to the Scottish government doesn't necessarily mean it will flow to us. And that's, you know, absolutely clear in my mind that we need to be making those cases. But I would also say that Kate Forbes, the Minister for Finance, has made it abundantly clear her position on this issue and her intention or wish to ensure that she supports public sector workers as well. And I think our exact comments were, it absolutely misjudges the value of frontline services. And I think that's something that we can absolutely agree on. Councillor Scott, please. Philip?
Sorry, convener, I'm having some technical difficulties there. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, I can hear you fine.
So I couldn't actually see the motion. Can you, somebody put the motion up again, please?
Yeah, if I can ask committee services just to display that. Was that your, do you have a comment thereafter?
Yeah, I do actually. I mean, just, just, first of all, convener, obviously if a way could be found to have public sector workers getting more money, I mean, I know obviously, and you rightly say, through the pandemic, they've done a brilliant job and everything, that would be a good thing. everything, that would be a good thing. I mean, but I think you have to look at the overall, you know, position that the government finds itself in. I mean, we're talking about, you know, £280 billion being spent trying to negate the cost of COVID. And that's adding to like over £2 trillion on the national debt. And 800,000 people have lost their jobs since the COVID crisis started. And the bulk of those have fallen upon the private sector, should I say. And it's not the case that public sector workers aren't getting a pay increase, because there are some people who are. I mean, I think it's, you know, certainly in England, the NHS workers are getting an increase. And all those people in the UK earning below the median wage of 24,000 will get one as well, which means that of five and a half million public sector workers, 4.2 million will get an increase. And of course, there's also an increase in the national living wage of 2.2%. So some people, you know, there will be people getting an increase. So I think, you know, although I'm happy, would be happy to support, ask me for more money for public sector workers, which I think all of us would be, would be happy to see. I don't think I can support, looking at the motion that's been put forward now, I don't think I can support something that condemns the UK government for proposing a public sector pay freeze, because I think that would be, that's not the wording that I would, I would seek to use. So if you can change the wording somehow, that maybe, you know, perhaps it's something that the Conservative Group can support. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Scott. I think that the essence of the motion is not, you know, detracted from, by the word condemn. I mean, I do condemn the position of suggesting that we should be freezing public sector pay at this point in time. But if that's the only thing stopping you agreeing to asking for more money for our valued staff, then I certainly wouldn't die in a ditch about it. But the point is, of course, that it's the fact that they are proposing a public sector pay freeze. So if you want to pick another word, councillor Scott, I'm more than receptive to hearing what that is. Critical of the fact, I don't know what your issue is in terms of the narrative, is it just the tone of that? Again, I don't think it changes the principle of the conversation we're having today. And I think that there's a couple of other issues. And I've done some research in terms of looking at some of the analysis that's come from those announcements. 2.6 million workers whose pay would be frozen are paid 7.9% less than their equivalent job in the private sector. So it's not as if we are asking people to take it on the chin for the good of the country. And we've also got to remember that in recent months, there has been multi-million pounds funding streams made available for very lucrative contracts. For example, if we look at Brexit as well, to a company that had no ships. So I think it's a bit of a false argument to suggest that there isn't an ability of UK government to find the resource when it's absolutely necessary. And I think this is one of those occasions when it is necessary. But I don't know if you want to come back in? Do you have an alternative word?
I don't know why we just can't say that we note it. Because, I mean, as I say, the government is having to make, you know, severe, there's severe challenges on everybody. And they're just trying to do the best that they can. But as I say, I wouldn't, I would never oppose trying to increase the pay, you know, the pay for public sector workers, because I think public sector workers, as I've already said, have been fantastic. And I don't know where we'd have been during this pandemic without them. But it's just, I think you've taken maybe an unnecessarily, you know, harsh tone if you wanted to get all party support on this. That's the only point I'm making. But I wouldn't, I mean, again, I wouldn't die in a ditch for it either. But if we could, if you even take that out and so it doesn't say that, then I think that's maybe something that the Conservative Group would support.
Okay, I'll take other comments and then I'll come back to that. So councillor McCready?
Thank you very much, convener. Can I just start on a, on a kind of technical point? I don't, it might just be me, but I think when we've, when we've shared motions in the past, there's been a way of us being able to save them. That one just seems to disappear every time it goes off screen. But that's, and it was, it was on the wordy side, but as somebody who's occasionally on the wordy side myself, that's not criticism. I think, I mean, my question, I agree with the sentiment of the motion. I think it's important that, I think it's important that we make the case that we do need to recognise that public sector workers have been in the frontline, that they are key workers. And that you said yourself, convener, I mean, it's all very well clapping for key workers, but we actually need to pay them properly. So I think my question is, assuming that I know what the motion, because I've seen Unison's motion anyway, that Bailey McPherson was putting forward at the next item, I think it is important, just to get some clarity, convener. And I think you came close to it, but it would be good if we could get absolute clarity that it would be your intention to support the motion from Unison, because I think there is an issue. Absolutely, it's disgraceful that the UK government are saying that there should be a pay freeze for public sector workers. But likewise, it has been disgraceful in the past, and as city councillors, we should think this, I think, it has been disgraceful in the past that consequentials to local government have not all been passed on. And indeed, the cuts to local government have been disproportionate from the Scottish government compared to cuts to the overall budget. So I think it's important that we as councillors stand up for local authority workers, that we stand up for public sector workers, but that we, so my question, convener, is, is it your intention, I know I'm jumping about a bit, but is it your intention to support the motion that's put forward by Unison, which is about making sure that there is a realignment or a reassessment of local government funding in Scotland? Because I think that's really important, that we, that we have that overall picture, that yes, the UK government needs to do more, but so does the Scottish government and so does this council.
Councillor McCready, usually I don't indulge in conversation that relates to another item, but on this occasion, I will allow it. Just to say, I'm absolutely supportive of the thrust of what's being proposed in the next item, and we'll come to that in a moment. But just to go back to the point on this item, again, I would rather there was a unanimous position, and we were all saying very clearly and very loudly that our public servants deserve a decent pay. So can I just suggest, in the spirit of getting an agreement, that the boards at the start perhaps changed to council does not support the fact that the UK government is proposing a public sector pay freeze, which I hope goes some way to address the point. And hopefully, we can get a unanimous agreement around that point and makes the council's position very clear in that regard as well. So I'm looking at councillor Scott's head for a nod.
Yeah, convener, I think that would be, that would be fine. I mean, I think if you are wanting to try and make your point over, I think condemning, condemning somebody outright like that probably wouldn't be, wouldn't be, we kind of productive anyway. I think, you know, if we can try and get a spirit of conciliation. So I'm grateful for your changing, changing your mind on that one. Thank you very much.
Okay. So, well, I wouldn't say I've changed my mind. I've just been nice with the wording. So on that basis, I see nobody disagreeing. I'm going to take that as agreed, unless somebody tells me otherwise. Okay, thank you. Tracy?
So that then takes us on to item four, local government funding. This item's been placed on the agenda at the request of Bailey McPherson.
Bailey McPherson, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, convener. And basically, as I think we all know, Unison did make contact, Arthur Nicholson, Unison did make contact with councillors regarding the national campaign that in relation to local government funding and the need for greater long term funding for local government in Scotland. Could I perhaps ask the officers just to circulate my motion? Although, other than to slightly tweak it, to put it into our wording, if you like, you know, because the original Unison one talked about council and I've talked about committee, and I slightly updated a little bit regarding Brexit, given the passage of time. But it's substantially what you've already seen, that Unison, it doesn't alter the Unison intention. And as Unison has said, COVID-19 highlighted the crucial, vital role of local government and its staff throughout the pandemic, as we alluded to during the previous item that we've just discussed. So Unison requested that all councillors take this, what I consider to be a very reasonable motion, before our own authority. And I think that's been done across, across the country. And I sensed support from some of the emails backwards and forwards, I sensed the support for the aims of the cross party, you know, to hopefully achieve cross party support of this. I will keep it brief, because time is ticking on despite a five o'clock rather than a six o'clock start. Obviously, this will give everybody the opportunity to read it, but they can take my word that it does not in any way alter the intention of what Unison asked us to do. Now, because time is of the essence, I'll refer to an exchange of emails with councillor Alexander. I should say councillor Duncan will second me, but I will refer to an exchange of emails that councillor Alexander was kind enough to contact me today, contact councillor Duncan and I today, to be strictly accurate, to say that he had a slight amendment to the wording, which I'm sure will be circulated in a moment, which I'm aware also that Unison is equally perfectly happy with. Now, the crucial, crucially important thing here is I think we should all be speaking with one voice in terms of the four key things, which are completely the same in both things that will come before you, about rewarding local government workers, which we've just alluded to in the previous item, securing the long term financial stability of local government, shaping local government to be fit for the post pandemic future, and fully consolidating the living wage. So in the spirit of cross party cooperation, and to be frank, a desire to ensure that we can agree this, the spirit of what Unison wants, although you've not seen it yet, I would just make clear, so you don't have to come back to me, convener, that councillor Duncan and I are happy to accept your amendments when they come forward in the moment. Thank you, convener.
Thank you very much. I'll let councillor Duncan in next.
Thanks, convener. Again, being mindful of the hour, and given the fact that, you know, Bailey McPherson's motion is pretty much in accord with the Unison one, I just want to place on record that I formally second it.
Thank you very much for that bravery as well. As Bailey McPherson mentioned, and thank you both for accepting the suggestion, a couple of minor tweaks, as I've suggested within the amendment, which if committee services can display that, that'd be really helpful. Essentially, it's the similar point in terms of adequate resources and making sure that barnet consequentials flow as appropriate to ensure that we have fair funding going forward and can address these vital points that are laid out within Unison's, Unison's proposed motion. And I should say, just to reiterate the point, that these were discussed, or this point was discussed with Unison directly and the rest of the administration group, and they were more than happy with that suggested addition. So can I just thank Bailey McPherson and councillor Duncan for accepting those points? And I'll keep it brief like others, and I'll just ask councillor Keenan, Bailey Keenan, to come in.
I don't, I don't think we'd have any issue in supporting this, the motion, even with the slight amendment looking for the barnet consequentials. I think it falls in line with what councillors have tried to do through COSLA for a number of years to get more money out of the Scottish government in relation to a fair settlement, so as that we're not looking at individuals having to be paid off, because, you know, there isn't a funding coming through that would support retaining their jobs. You know, it has been job losses in local government over the years. There's no been service reshaping for the good. I mean, even tonight, we've heard on a number of occasions, you know, people looking for biodiversity officers, a tree officer to be engaged, the community warden service, you know, maybe nowhere it should be, and a ranger service that's probably pretty light on the ground as well. Now, I think for to have decent services going forward, they need people there to deliver them. So we're going to have a problem in supporting Unite in the call that local governments made on trade unions for the last few years to help them lobby government for more money.
Thank you for those comments. Bailey Scott?
Thanks, convener. I'm having a bit of a difficulty seeing these motions, I'm afraid. I got the one you emailed me just before the start of tonight's committees. But I've, and I've circulated to my colleagues, but I don't know whether you've had the chance to see it. I haven't been, I can't see the one that Bailey McPherson's has moved. But he does say it's the same as the one that Arthur had circulated with pigging up some of the language that was in it in regard to council and committees. And I had no difficulty at all with Arthur's one. And I had actually asked committee services to put the item on the agenda as well, because I would have moved similar to what Arthur had put forward. And I was happy to support that. Your one, I think, does change it slightly, and not what I probably, not the way I probably would have written it. I'm not going to oppose it, because I'm happy to support it. The thrust of it is absolutely where it should be. When you look at COSLA's, sorry, when you look at Unison's campaign site, they do mention that the Scottish government must fund local councillors properly to keep communities safe. And the Scottish government needs to find additional resources for Scotland's councils. But then does go on to say, our governments must plug the gap in funding, governments plural. So I have no difficulty at all in writing to both governments, lobbying both governments. Frankly, I don't really care where the money comes from. The gap in local government has to be plugged somewhere. We were in dire straits before start of the COVID pandemic, as a result of cuts to council budgets. And I really don't know what we're going to do in the next financial year with the way things are going. So worth noting though, that the Scottish government budget has been increased by 16% from 2007 to 2019. And over the same period, the funding to local government from the Scottish government has only increased by 7%. So even if we do get additional funding coming to the Scottish government, I'm not convinced that we will get a fair share of that, given the past record of a Scottish government in not properly funding local government. But I'm willing to support the motion. But as I'm saying, I'm doing it blind, because I can't really see them and compare both of them.
Blind faith, I think that's called, Bailey Scott. So thank you for those comments. But I think-
Just in relation to that, it might be useful going forward in occasions like this, that we could have motions emailed to us in advance, particularly on ones that groups are looking for unanimous support. Makes it so much easier for us to be able to view them in advance.
Yep, that's a fair point. And I'm sure everybody's listening to that point. I think we've got agreement here. So I'm not going to labour the point any further. And Fraser, I don't know if there's anything you want to say in terms of winding up. But on that basis, I think we've got broad agreement.
No, I'm perfectly happy that we just move forward in a spirit of unity, which is always good to see.
It's the way we're starting the new year. Let's hope it continues. Right. Thank you, everyone. That is agreed.
That takes us on to item five, Brexit update. This report is for noting.
I don't intend to say too much on this. I'll defer to our spokesperson on such matters. But just to thank officers, actually, because it has been a trial and a tribulation trying to pull this report together. I think it's fair to say, I'm looking at Andrea as I'm saying this, and the difficulties of an ever moving feast in making sure that the information that's brought to us is as current as it possibly can be. And obviously, there are challenges within that that we will have to deal with and contend with as we move forward as well. So really, just to thank officers for everything they're doing on that. Can I bring in councillor Dawson?
Convener, thanks very much. I think you've stolen my initial thunder, actually, in many respects, because I wanted to thank Andrea and other officers throughout the council and the ESAC for the work that they have continued to do with regards to our Brexit preparations and trying to navigate the amount of information, or in many cases, lack of information, even during the period that we've seen the COVID pandemic take officers away to other tasks. I think the fact that the transition period was not extended during one of the most difficult times in living memory is beyond me. And I do feel that the Westminster government have been having a laugh. Well, I have to say, the joke's no funny. You know, we're trying to juggle a pandemic as well as perhaps what is one of the most catastrophic things to happen to a country in a long time, which is, which is Brexit. We now wait to see the full extent of the decision to leave the EU as despite, as despite, sorry, government promises of the grass now being greener, and this being a great opportunity for the UK. We're already seeing reports of delays in customs, businesses having much more paperwork than expected, hugely increased costs just to send normal packages to the EU. I've seen one quote recently where somebody sent something to Poland and there was an extra £130. The package only cost 30 quid. Goods from the UK being turned back at ports. And whilst it might seem slightly humorous, lorry drivers are now having their lunch confiscated, and people with second homes in the EU now having major problems accessing their properties or other services in these other countries. We're also seeing global delivery companies temporarily stop deliveries into and out of Europe due to these issues and- We're also seeing global delivery companies temporarily stop deliveries into and out of Europe due to these issues and reports, as I said, of sky-high fees. Well, in some cases, I think we really need to say without you so, because what we've said in the past is now coming slightly to fruition. Sadly, we've also seen the end of the Erasmus scheme, despite the Prime Minister being quoted seeing that was absolutely no threat to this whatsoever. The fabled success of Brexit seems to be a long way off, and we will be watching with interest over the next weeks and months to see precisely what may or may not happen. However, it currently looks like a lot of the promises made during the referendum have now been broken. To me, what was described as an oven-ready deal would now appear to be more like a Doug's dinner. We will have to wait for the full effect to be seen, and it may be that some things improve. However, I hate my doubts. But I just want to close in some respects on one thing that I think is vitally important to the citizens of Dundee, and if any EU citizen living in our city who has yet to apply for settled status, there's still time to do this, and there is still help out there in order to get this application made. There's information on our website, and the CAB also stands ready to assist. So therefore, I would urge any EU citizen who is still to do it to do so, and should they require any assistance, please seek it out. But we'll be watching this whole process closely. I think worse is more, worse is yet to come, I believe, convenor.
Thank you for those comments. Councillor Dawson, councillor Duncan, you've got a motion.
Thanks, convenor. I've asked committee services, because there seem to be grim winds tonight, possibly courtesy of Microsoft, to email my motion to everybody, so hopefully that'll happen as I'm speaking. As a belt-and-braces exercise, do you want me to actually read it out word for word? Would that be helpful?
As long as it's not six pages long, yes, please proceed.
I guarantee it's definitely not six pages long. Okay, so, I mean, firstly, I should just preface everything by saying that, you know, I don't want to rehearse all the arguments for or against Brexit. I mean, we are, for better or worse, committed on a course, however vague that may be. And, you know, I have to say, I hope it is a success. I do. I mean, I certainly don't want us to fail. COVID has been a massive challenge and still is. Brexit and its consequences is perhaps more within the gift of humanity than a pandemic. But having said all that, I was concerned in this report to see that, you know, there's been a lack of consultation with the likes of us, frankly, put it that way. So my motion reads, committee recognises the importance EU funding has had over many years to the city in successfully delivering key projects. It notes with concern, therefore, that the consultation promised by the UK government on the detail priorities and operation of the proposed UK Shared Prosperity Fund that is due to replace EU structural funds once the Treasury guarantee for existing projects ends has not materialised. The views of the devolved government administrations and local government on the operation of the UK Shared Prosperity Fund are vital. Therefore, committee instructs the chief executive to write to the Chancellor of the Exchequer and Her Majesty's Treasury, making this clear, and to seek assurances that Dundee City Council will be given the opportunity to be consulted on the detail of the UK Shared Prosperity Fund before it is finalised. I would submit that's perfectly reasonable, and in the spirit of, you know, cooperation that we've seen tonight, I would, I would hope that that gathers widespread support.
I don't see why it wouldn't. Councillor Duncan, but I'll let Bailey McPherson second you.
Thanks, convenor, and happy to second councillor Duncan. Could I maybe just, first of all, however, say that I completely concur with the earlier points that you and councillor Dawson alluded to in relation to the excellent, this is an excellent report, and there's been a lot of work gone into it, and I think that should be placed on record in pooling this report together, particularly given the fast-moving environment. And could I also perhaps place on record my personal thanks, and I'm sure the thanks of other members, to Joanne Scobie for her excellent and very regular Friday updates. You know, Joanne's the ESAC EU officer. I think these have been extremely useful in keeping us abreast of developments. My own view, I think, I agree many of us are of the view that Brexit ain't the cleverest idea that was ever drawn up. And it's my own prediction, not that I am mystic, Meg, but it's my own prediction that for those who thought Brexit would be a good idea, prepare for disappointment. I think in the medium to long term, I think we will see disadvantage to the country in having gone down this path. But with that, what I would say is, I think the points made by councillor Duncan in relation to the vital nature to have some consultation on the UK Shared Prosperity Fund is absolutely vital. This is huge money. You just have to look at what the sort of projects that EU funding has delivered over the past 40 years in Scotland, and I think it is vitally important that there is maximum consultation on how this will operate, and it's very disappointing that thus far that has been solely lacking. So with that, I second councillor Duncan, convenor.
Thanks very much for that. I absolutely support what's been proposed here. It's been a constant topic of conversation within COSLA, as you'd expect, and COSLA has made and continues to make representations to the UK government on that lack of consultation as well. I'll let councillor Scott come in next. Councillor Scott?
Yes, thank you, convenor. I don't think the Conservative group would have a problem in supporting councillor Duncan's motion. But what I would say is, if councillor Dawson suggested that Brexit, Brexit was a catastrophe, imagine how much worse it would have been if we'd got, if we Brexited without a deal, as the Liberal Democrats and the SNP wanted, and that's how they voted in Parliament the other day. Just imagine how much worse that would have been. So we'll wait to see what happens with Brexit, but, you know, time will tell. But just to put on record, the fact that, you know, Boris Johnson said he would get Brexit done, he'd get a deal done by the 31st of December this year. Everybody said he couldn't do it, and he's managed to do it. And thank God he did get a deal, because as I say, leaving without a deal would have been an absolute disaster for this country.
Your ability to find optimism in a really not optimistic scenario is second to none, I would say, councillor Scott. And I would perhaps refer you to the previous leader of your party, who also criticised the deal that has been landed at our feet by Boris Johnson, saying it was worse than what she had proposed a year past and lost her position because of the more right-wing members of your own party. But that's a separate conversation, I think, and let's not go down that path because we'll be here all night. I think the next comment I saw was Bailey Keenan.
Convenor, I don't really have a problem in supporting the motion. It would be better if the motion was beefed up a little, for the point of view of what would our asks be for money out of that Shared Prosperity Fund? You know, we've had an action group looking at the effects of Brexit, and we've had that going within council for a few years. But we really need to start addressing the issues that will affect the city and the funding that will go missing so as that we're making the asks directly for the bit that we're looking to be replaced. So I have no problem in looking to be at the table in the negotiations, but we certainly as a council need to start putting together the very issues that will affect the city. I mean, I think when I asked that our working group we put together, I was saying things like fisheries, the drinks industry, the whisky industry are all very good at lobbying. They're all very good at lobbying for their share of the funding. We need to get as good as that.
Thank you for your comments. Bailey Keenan, councillor Dawson next.
Yeah, I'll be really quick, considering I won't be cheeky coming in twice, convenor. Thank you. Just want to thank Fraser for his comments about Joanne. Joanne does an exceptionally good job at keeping us all up to date. And I have to say, she's been a good officer within ESAC. Considering that it's a European organisation, she's had the threat basically of not having a job hanging over her head for a little while now, but she's still managing to pile through and keep us all up to date and get the information that we require. Got to say, I agree with Craig, but I think we've, we've mentioned this before at the cross-party group, but also within ESAC. That consultation is sitting on a Whitehall shelf. It has never been sent out, and it's absolutely ludicrous that the government, you know, we've now left, we've now gone through the transition period, we are looking towards the greener pastures, as Boris would probably say, but they are still to come forward with this consultation. It's absolutely shocking that we now find ourselves completely out of the European Union and still, to this day, we haven't been consulted on it. So, yeah, just to agree with Craig and Fraser and their, their motion, I should say, to that, and thank you for bringing it up.
Thanks for your comments. Councillor Dawson, I'll move on to Bailey Scott.
Thanks, convenor. Once again, I'm not able to see the motion because I don't seem to have got the email yet. So I'm just relying on my memory from what, when it was read out. And, yeah, I'm happy to support, and I think, yes, we need to be part of a, be consulted on the shared, oh gosh, what am I trying to say?
Prosperity.
Prosperity Fund, that's it. Yeah, sorry. Yeah, I agree that we should be consulted on that. But like my brother, I would like to be a bit optimistic about it, if we can be, because I'm hopeful that some of, that both sides will get used to the new arrangements and any difficulties will be smoothed out. But the report does go on and talks about opportunities, and you know what? There will be opportunities because 95% of UK firms don't export to the EU, and 85% of the world economy is outside the EU. So there are opportunities there that we ought to be able to tap into as a city to get as much benefit from that as we possibly can. And on the subject of opportunities, I notice this report doesn't mention the free ports like the last report did, and I just wondered, convenor, if you had an update on that.
Okay, I'll ask officers just to provide comment on that. I'm trying to see who's on the call. Andrea, is there anything you want to say on that? I can't see if we've got colleagues from City Development on the call at the moment.
No, there is no colleagues from City Development on the call at the moment. We haven't got any recent update on free ports, other than that fourth ports were still engaging in that process. But I'm happy to take that back and get a further update and share it with elected members.
Thank you for that. And I'll take the next comment as the last comment. So Bailey Sawyer's final word.
Thanks very much, convenor. I'll be very brief. I could just about stand one Tory trying to pretend they're like the advantages to Brexit, but when there was two in a row, it set me off, I'm afraid. So I'm just going to read a couple of tweets from somebody who I believe is a Labour MP in England, who says, "Post-Brexit, it now seems increasingly clear the Scottish people have two clear choices before them. One, union with a declining imperial power ruled by hard-right neoliberal English nationalists. Or two, vote for Scottish independence and look to rejoin the EU, an emerging power with democratic institutions gaining in power, not receding." Hmm. I'll say no more, convenor.
Thank you very much for that, Bailey Sawyer. So with all of that said, I think we have unanimous agreement. So this item is agreed.
That takes us on to item six, Dundee Health and Social Care Partnership Annual Performance Report 2019-2020. This is for noting.
Yeah, any comments, questions on this report? Yeah, councillor Richardson.
Thank you, convenor. It's just to say, I was really quite disappointed to see that there's been quite a significant reduction in the proportion of care services graded good. In the Care Inspectorate reports, this is on page 24, we seem to have slipped from being up at 88% down to 80%, and we're now sort of 2% low the Scottish average. But this, basically, if only 80% of the scores are getting good and above, then 20% are getting scores that are not good. And really, given that at this point in time, there are a number of people in the same sort of position as themselves with relatives in care homes, and we have to rely on the services that are provided because we cannot get in to see them. We have had very little contact, and we need to be assured that the quality of care that relatives are getting is better than good, that it is excellent and/or as good as it can be. I'd like assurances from management that this will be looked into and everything possible will be done to improve the situation for all relatives of people in care homes throughout Dundee.
Thanks, Margaret. And we've got Vicky Irons and Diane McCullough on the call tonight. So can I perhaps ask them just to come back on that particular point that you've raised, please?
Yes, thank you, councillor Richardson. I'm really sorry, but my screen has frozen, and I can't get to the page you're talking to in terms of responding directly to the data. But we have invested a lot of our resources in supporting care homes. We have a care home team who works directly. I think we're quite unique in Scotland in having that. They works directly with our care homes. That includes a multidisciplinary team, including an advanced nurse practitioner and other support services. It's disappointing that the average has gone down, particularly as we're now sitting below, and as you say, we have been significantly higher over the last number of years. We have seen care homes close in the last couple of years, which perhaps we're not managing to deliver the services that we particularly would have liked them to, and we will continue to work with our care homes in order to do that. We do work really, really closely. We do monitor the care on a very regular basis, and we have a whole load of processes that we will put into place as soon as that works. I think the only other thing I would say is that the Care Inspector has actually recently changed their inspection process and the standards that staff are working to, and we have identified that there's been a natural dip because, so effectively, every inspection relies on the services being able to provide the evidence in relation to the grades that they've been asked to and the standards they've been asked to cover. And we have noticed that for some services, their grades have dipped because they've not been able to provide that evidence. We would hope that we'd start to see a lot of those grades going back up again, because it was services in some cases who have delivered very, very high levels of care, and next year we'll be able to start to see, hopefully, a balancing around that. But we do put a huge amount of effort and support into our care homes to make sure that they deliver the best care that they possibly can.
Thank you for that. Sorry, I've just seen Mr Many has reminded me that standing orders now suspended at half eight. Given where we are at the agenda and given the last few items are all, one standard items, but updates on position, can I, on this occasion, seek agreement to suspend standing orders so that we can deal with the three remaining items after this?
Convenor, I'm reasonably happy with that, but I don't think we should do it as a matter of course.
Either do I. So I think we agree on that point, Kevin, but just where we are, where we are at on the agenda, I think it would make sense at this time to agree to do so. So with that agreement, I'll just come back to councillor Lynn.
Yeah, I'll keep this brief. Just on the report, I've just taken over as the chair of the partnership, and I'm pleased by the report, which I think is generally a good one. But there are a number of areas, I think, where we have to show improvement. The statistics around drug deaths, for example, which continue to rise are alarming, and there's no doubt that we have to improve the service we give to those with mental health problems, too. We faced considerable challenges in the past year in relation to the provision of building-based or face-to-face services. I'm determined that we refocus on those issues in the year to come. And I know that other members have shown considerable interest in these issues as well. Councillor might have been one of them at the recent well-attended mental health briefing we had, and I'm pleased by that. And I hope that that interest continues and that they can contribute to the debate with any potential solutions they may have to the problems that we face. That's definitely welcome, I think, as I made clear that day. Apart from the improvements we need to make in mental health and in terms of drug tests, there's one other statistic on the, I can't really say that word, I've just realised, there's one other stat in the report which kind of jumps out, which really isn't good enough and we need to do more work on, and that is the extent to which carers feel supported, which sits at 38% of carers. And now, the national average is 37%, so we're doing better than the national average there. But I think that, along with these other two areas, is something we really need to look at in the year to come. And I look forward to the challenge, and I hope that the work that we're going to do in the next year will be reflected in a positive way in next year's report. Thanks, convenor.
Thanks very much for your comments, councillor Lynn. That's appreciated, and we look forward to seeing that progress over the next year. Councillor Duncan?
Thanks, convenor. I just wanted to ask a question regarding statistics.
Thanks, Convenor. I just wanted to ask a question regarding statistics that appear on page 24 and then later also appear on page 124. The ones I'm talking about are, it's a tale of two halves in a way. The percentage of days people spend in hospital prior to discharge is, we in Dundee have a better record, it says, than compared to Scotland's. But on the other hand, I'm concerned to see that the readmission to acute hospital within 28 days of discharge is worse than Scotland's. I suppose I'm just probably naively wondering and hoping that they're not actually related in any way. In other words, is there maybe a bit too much pressure to get people out of hospital in each case a bit too soon?
Okay, thanks for your question. I'll just ask officers to come in.
Hi, councillor Duncan, I might come back on this. I think sometimes the way that we organise our services and the way that we're asked to submit information can play odds with one another. So in relation to the readmissions, we know that the way that we work some of our pathways, for example, can cause us difficulties and then how that then reports into the information which is there. So it is quite a complicated picture. I'm fairly confident and trying to give you some reassurance that the two things are not connected. One of the reasons why we have good ways of actually getting people out of hospital quickly is we will do things like a discharge to assess. So if we have, for example, someone who it might look like we're going to end up in a care home, we'll actually discharge that person home with a really large level of support. We'll do the assessment of when they're at home because we know that people quite often will perform better at home than they will in hospital in familiar surroundings and we'll actually do that support. So it's about our discharge services that actually get people out of hospital. And actually, there are issues about the way we code things for people going back into hospital in terms of the readmission. So we code people who may be going for different types of appointments as readmissions and because of some of the pathways and different issues around that, which can overinflate some of our data. But there's a lot of work going on to look at the information in order to determine what we do. But quite happy to give you further information if that's required.
Yeah, thanks for that explanation. And personally, I'd be grateful to see more information. And just to make it clear, I mean, I don't think any of us want anyone to spend a single day longer than necessary in hospital. I mean, that's not the best place sometimes to recover, as it were. But on the other hand, we shouldn't be too hasty to put people out and defend for themselves to some extent. Thanks.
Okay, thank you for that. Councillor Keenan, Bailey Keenan?
Cheers. Thanks, Convenor. I think there's been a lot of valid points raised tonight. I think councillor Richardson raises the fact that there's diminishing grades within care homes that needs to be addressed. And I know that obviously through the pandemic, there is probably more support went in. But the fact that, you know, these grades are lower isn't really good enough. And we should do whatever we can as a city to make sure that the grades improve. So we really need to do what we're in depth at look at what we're doing to support so as that these grades come up. Because we should be expecting the best for our people. And I welcome the comments that were made by councillor Lynne in relation to mental health. And he is right that councillor Mara raised the issue. I mean, some time ago, it was approved by council, we'd look for a drop in centre for mental health. It's not been delivered as yet. And I think that, you know, mental health still proves to be an issue within Dundee. And if anything, somewhat it's getting worse. And I think I raised the fact that there's a lot of younger people presenting with issues through the sort of Covid lockdown. It's no helped matters for them. And in drugs deaths have continued to grow. Obviously, the minister's lost his job over it, but you know, that's no consolation for anyone. We as a city need to do something that addresses the issue. And we put together a drugs commission and that drugs commission was meant to remeet and revisit and probably be used to sense check the work that was going on to make improvements. And I think that it's incumbent upon us to make sure that that drugs commission is brought back into play as soon as it was agreed at the Dundee Partnership that that would happen. And it needs to be happening fairly soon. Or the expertise and the information that was gleaned way beyond the words that were written in the report will be lost to people. And it's important that we utilise that great amount of work that was done at that time for the benefits of the city. So I think that that's an action that we need to take forward is to make sure the drugs commission is put back into play. And there's a level of support there for them so as that they can continue to oversee what's going on and look at some of the work streams that have already looked to improve the service. Just to make sure that sense check, make sure that it's done properly.
Thanks for everyone's comments so far. And just on a few points that I've made, I think councillor Lynne articulated at the briefing that we had his support for the item that you just discussed or mentioned, councillor Keenan as well. And I think in regard to the drug commission, there's a lot of work still to do. There will be a report that comes back as we were meant or as was mentioned in recent discussion on Friday afternoon, which is an update on progress in that regard. And I think there is certainly room for conversation about the areas in which we need to take forward. But there is that expertise to call upon. And actually, it's there right now. And there is support available in the city and we're making sure that we call upon that way as and when is appropriate. I see no other questions at this point, so I'm going to just say that this item is agreed unless anybody tells me otherwise. Okay, thank you. We'll move on.
That takes us on to item seven, Treasury Management Activity 2020-2021 Midyear Review. Again, this is for noting.
This is an update. Any questions? Nope. Okay, that's agreed. Oh, sorry, I was too quick. Bailey, right. I will take my time on the next one. Apologies.
Sorry, that was a mistake.
Oh, right. Okay. Fair enough. I thought it was my mistake. So that's good.
No, 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 it's mine.
No problem.
Okay, that then takes us on to item eight, capital expenditure monitoring. And again, this is for noting.
Sorry, I didn't realise I was on mute first time tonight. Bailey McPherson?
Thanks, Convenor. I have a question in relation to the item, sorry, the paragraph 5.2.1. Did I hear correctly that there's no one from City Development here tonight? And if that's the case, I'd be a little bit concerned because clearly, I mean, I have a question on item nine and it's also City Development related. And I'm just beginning to wonder who would be in a position to actually answer these questions if there's no one from City Development here. But that said, I will ask it anyway. In relation to 5.2.1, it indicates in relation to the town centre fund, additional projected expenditure during this year of in excess of quarter of a million pounds. Now, there's two aspects to that. One is, I would be grateful if we could perhaps have some detail as what the additional expenditure actually is. Welcome though it is, I am sure. It also indicates that it will be used, as is what the town centre fund is there for, to contribute to the vibrancy, vitality and visibility of the town centre. Thought we actually had a city centre, but there you go. And neighbourhoods. Now, I'd also be grateful for some indication as to how district shopping centres are benefiting as well as the city centre. Because clearly, our district shopping centres are extremely important to the city. So I would just be grateful for some information regarding that.
Yeah, I can see the chief executive wants to come in. So Greg?
Yeah, thanks, Convenor, and thanks, Bailey McPherson. So just having a quick look through the list of participants in tonight's committee. I understand that Mr. Martin is on the meeting tonight. So I'm not aware of the specific funding in relation to 5.2.1. But, Convenor, with your agreement, if I can ask Mr. Martin just to respond to Bailey McPherson's questions?
Yeah, that would be fine. Neil, put you on the spot?
Yeah, thanks, Convenor. Thanks, Bailey McPherson. Clearly, I don't actually have the detail of that. And I would speak to my colleague Gregor Hamlin. So if Bailey McPherson's happy to allow me to go back and get a bit more detail, we'll respond to you with regards to the town centre and district funds.
I have no problem with that at all. And I'll look forward to receiving that. I only said that nobody from City Development was on the call because I think, Andrea, I said earlier on, that nobody from City Development was on the call. So I'm grateful that you're here, Neil, and I'm very grateful for your reply.
I'm happy to do that.
Thank you both. Councillor Richardson, Margaret?
Thank you, Convenor. I have a question and it's with regard to the slippage. I mean, the slippage that's shown on a number of the expenditure items is quite severe. And I understand that, you know, under the Covid restrictions, that for the first two, three months of the year, you know, nothing, construction was severely restricted, but it hasn't been now for a number of months. Although I know that it might soon be restricted again. Back when we were having group discussions with the chief exec and these officers, we were given assurances that the capital plan would be reviewed, the capital expenditure programme would be looked at with a view to community wealth building. Given how severely businesses would be hit in Dundee, it was the council's responsibility to do all that it could to bring this work forward and to create work and to create jobs and circulate money and get the economy, boost the economy in any way possible. And what I'd like to know is, I'd like some assurance that that's still the plan as much as possible. Rather than just let things slip and slip and slip where possible. If there's any projects that can be started, they are started.
Yeah, thanks, Margaret. I'll bring in Greg in just a moment. But just to say whilst, you know, construction is allowed or permitted to continue even right now, there are still restrictions in place in terms of the number of people that can be on sites and there are other restrictions in place. So you aren't seeing the same workforce that we would normally see, which obviously adds to less work being done on site as a result of that. So there are still challenges in terms of the pipeline of work there. And I know that officers are as keen as we are to make sure that we're delivering the programme that we've set out. But Greg, can I just ask you, I had to comment to that?
Yeah, thanks, Convenor, and thanks councillor Richardson for the question. You're absolutely right. We gave a commitment to look at the capital plan as a result of Covid and that was brought back to Policy and Resources Committee at the end of last year, looking to reforecast that. There have been a number of restrictions, as you've outlined, and they went longer than just for two to three months because some of the work just isn't about what's happening outside. It's also about what we can reasonably do inside. And we were cautious about the approach we were taking. Just to give members of committee assurance, as discussed at the December Policy and Resources Committee, officers are now looking at working up what a community wealth building strategy will look like. And as I said at that meeting, it's not just about what the council can do, it's about what anchor institutions can do. So we'll be reaching out to them. If there are projects that we can start and we can start quickly that are within the plan or even looking at what we're due to in future years, to have consistency and to continue with the flow of work, not just for our in-house construction services, but external services that we use within the city, then please be assured that that is happening. But obviously, at the moment, it is challenging given we are in level four plus additional restrictions and we continue to monitor that. But when we can, we will look to bring the capital plan back and accelerate the work that's slipped in some areas and if not all of it. So hopefully, that's a response to your question.
Thanks, Greg, for coming back on that point. Margaret, do you have a supplementary?
No, thanks, Greg. I'm glad to hear that it's still part of the plan to look at it again and to make sure we can bring forward anything that we can bring forward. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. No other questions on this, so I'll take that as agreed. Thank you.
That takes us on to item nine, revenue monitoring. You have a report before you.
Again, standard report with an update in this. Margaret? You're first. You're on mute, Margaret.
Yeah, the fingers are just not working now.
You were quick with your buzzer in the first place, though.
Right. In terms of this report, I mean, I think it's, you know, to be congratulated that, you know, that there is these underspends in terms of both the general fund and the housing revenue, you know, to the tune of more than, more than six million. And okay, there's still the Covid position and the deficit there that there's possibly going to be some sort of offset if the governments don't actually come, come good with the funding that they really ought to. However, I have a real concern about the number of areas where this, these underspends have kind of arisen from underspends on staff or posts not being filled or staff slippage in one way or another. And given that it's been mentioned two or three times before this evening about the fact that there's some posts that, you know, we don't have anybody looking at trees or whatever else. But also, given that every authority and every business is bound to be experiencing quite severe staff shortages at the moment in terms of people being offill, people shielding. Are we not, by not filling posts, putting more pressures on the staff that are there? And surely we have a huge, a huge number of people who we could employ to do some of this work and to help out. You know, there are positions there.
Thank you for your question. I'll invite officers in in just a moment. But just to say, I mean, again, this is one side of the coin, I suppose. And we've got to remember that we still find ourselves in a very precarious financial position and one that I think causes us all certainly some concern and certainly Greg and I, sleepless nights of late as we, you know, are in the latest round of restrictions, we're going to see our financial position inevitably deteriorate again. So we've got to bear in mind that we are swiftly moving to the end of the financial year. There are huge challenges on that horizon. And as I've said, this is only one part of that. I hear what you're saying, but the alternative is also adding further pressure into our budgetary position, which I think all elected members would not thank us for if we were then reporting overspends or certainly a greater deficit being created as a result of that. But Greg, do you want to add any further comment?
Yeah, thanks, Convenor. So it's just probably to outline the overall position just to, in relation to what councillor Richardson had said. So back in December, we reported that we'll have a deficit position for the council, including the underspend of the general fund of 2.3 million and that time of 6.5. When you look at the improvement in terms of the underspend, which is now at 3.9, that will take that overspend to the general fund to £5 million. That was when we were in level three restrictions. With the move to level four restrictions and limited work being able to be carried out on capital projects in some regards and construction services, and also further reduction in terms of services that we may be able to provide which are chargeable, I would estimate that that position will worsen. And at present, we have an £8 million worth of unrestricted reserves. So within the revenue monitoring report, and it's something that we've included, there are various actions that the management team are considering. So there was a period of time last year where we were unable to recruit. And obviously, for the last part of last year, we were recruiting into key posts. But at the moment, my advice to elected members is we need to manage where possible and filling key and critical posts within the organisation, which we have done, and there is clear evidence of that. However, currently looking at a £5 million overspend, we also have a duty to take action to try to mitigate that so that we are not utilising all of our reserves, particularly given that those Covid pressures are likely to continue into 21-22. So at the moment, management teams consider all vacancies within their services. Any that are deemed to be critical or vulnerable posts or any that are income generating posts are all reviewed and are then final approval by the heads of HR and then they will continue. But at the moment, my advice to the management team and to all councillors on the call this evening is that we need to continue to manage recruitment in that way, given the size of overspend being reported. And also, that's likely to increase for the last quarter of 2021.
Thanks for that. Margaret, do you have a supplementary?
Yeah, I understand what you're saying in terms of monetary terms. But my key question was about the pressures that these unfilled posts will be putting on services that are already limited by people going off sick, people shielding. I mean, if you've got a reduced number of staff already trying to take on, you know, doing jobs for other posts and trying to take on jobs for some of their colleagues, surely that's going to have a huge impact on the staff morale and their ability to actually cope with what's going to be an even tougher time. and their ability to actually cope with what's going to be an even tougher time going forward.
I think you're making a general point, Margaret, which is absolutely right in terms of pressure on staff. And I know that we'll all be acutely aware of that. I suppose it depends upon the specific area of service that you're also looking at and consideration of those individual posts. Because what Greg has not said is that we are not filling posts. We will fill posts where it is absolutely necessary and appropriate to do so and in those key areas. So, you know, right now, for example, health and social care staff, absolutely essential, absolute key, critical point in terms of our response to Covid. We will absolutely be looking to recruit into those areas. So there are very, you know, a myriad of considerations that are taken into account before officers make that decision. But again, going back to the points that have been made, the overall financial position is such that we need to be making these decisions in the way in which officers have already laid out, have previously reported and have previously appraised councillors of as well. But Greg, I don't know if there's anything else you want to say in response to that?
No, I think, Councillor Alexander, you've covered it just to give Councillor Richardson the assurance that we value the hard work, dedication and commitment of all of our staff. But there are some services, even within level three restrictions, where we're not providing the same services what we did back in January in 2020. So we look to deploy staff through our voluntary scheme, working with trade unions. And each director and heads of service are monitoring the position within their own service area to avoid the examples that you gave around pressure and demand. But where there are critical posts, and Councillor Alexander covered them, they have been recruited and we continued to do that last year. But at this moment, we obviously still have to scrutinise every post due to the significant financial challenges being faced with the council at this time.
Thanks, Greg. Okay, Bailey McPherson.
Oh, sorry. Could I just come back with one second?
If you're very brief, Margaret, yeah.
In terms of the Covid deficit, is there no further news that the governments, either the UK or Scottish government, are going to finance any of these costs? I mean, surely we need to keep pushing for them to, in some way, help and assist in these matters.
Again, just to reiterate the point that I've made previously, we are continuing to lobby and obviously meetings through Cosley in particular, the 32 local authority voices across Scotland, all saying the same thing in terms of the financial position that we face and the requirement for additional funding to flow, whether it be from Holyrood or Westminster, we absolutely need those assurances. So that lobbying exercise continues, that work with chief finance officers, chief executives, leaders of councils continues at pace. But there is no certainty, there are no guarantees. And as we stand right now, we have no, you know, absolute clarity that we are going to be in a position where that will be fully funded and that's the position. And we continue to work at that. Bailey McPherson.
Thanks, Convenor. Just in relation to what's been discussed there. And I understand where Councillor Richardson's coming from in relation to staffing. But I concur with what the chief executive has had to say, that there is a precarious financial position, frankly. And we have to be sensible and cautious. And I think the fundamental point is the motion that was passed earlier on the long-term future of local government finance doesn't half underline the importance of ensuring that there is a proper funding of local government going forward. My question is around 6.6 in the report and it's in relation, as I alluded to earlier, in the earlier item, to city development. First of all, make a comment that Robin Prestwood did give an assurance to committee in relation to this, in relation to actually this report at an earlier stage, about the attempts by city development officers to reduce the longstanding overspend in city development. And I have to say, credit where credit's due, it might still be 1.1 million, but there has clear progress been made and all credit to Robin and his team for the efforts that they're making. My question's in relation to the comments about the Building, Merger and Rationalisation Group, which is the para four of 6.6 on page 190. I would just really be keen to know what progress that has been possible to progress given the Covid-19 health emergency. And also, given that we have obviously huge numbers of staff working from home at present, what lessons we're going to learn in relation to that, in relation to possible opportunities for homeworking for larger numbers of staff going forward and what effect that may have on the Building, Merger and Rationalisation Group's work? If I can give you a very specific example, my own employers are not renewing the lease on their headquarters because they've found another way of moving forward. It's a very much smaller and very different organisation to a local authority-sized Dundee City Council. But surely the lesson from this is we have to look carefully at how we can utilise homeworking where that is of benefit to both the council and to our staff.
Thanks, Fraser. You had a kind of specific element and then a more general point there. So I'll maybe ask, I don't know, Neil, do you have any information just in terms of the first point that Bailey McPherson was making? And then I'll perhaps ask the chief executive to comment on the broader point of homeworking.
Thanks, Convenor. Thanks, Bailey McPherson. Yeah, clearly, due to Covid, nobody would have envisaged in terms of the Building, Merger Programme having to cater for that. So that has obviously slowed down progress that we would have hoped to have made with resources being diverted. Having said that, we'll have managed to meet regularly remotely and we'll have got some proposals that are getting developed. And I would hope that over the next two, three months, we're able to bring some proposals back to committee that'll reflect some of the work that we've managed to do in the period.
Thanks for that.
Thanks. And then on the broader point, Greg, can I ask you to come in in terms of the approach taken across the board?
Yeah, thanks, Convenor. So Bailey McPherson, thanks for your question. We've had a lot of feedback from staff who are enjoying working from home. But equally, we've had feedback from staff who say they would quite like to get back in an office environment when it's safe to do so. I would imagine that once we're slightly more certain about our office accommodation requirements going forward, that certainly there'll be a higher uptake regarding homeworking or even more of a blended approach where people might end up in an office environment for a couple of days. And I think the work that Neil's just outlined that we're currently doing in terms of trying to progress decisions that committee have made around building closures and actually implementing those and bringing back a paper to committee will allow elected members to see that work. But certainly going forward, I think we've got the technology in most parts working well to allow that to continue. And it's something that I know staff, colleagues and trade unions will want to see us progress. So I think there will be a hybrid model, certainly for the short to medium term, which will influence how much office property we will occupy going forward.
I'm grateful for that. I think taking, you know, taking this forward makes a whole lot of sense. And given that we have hot desking in, you know, in our buildings as it was, frankly, prior to Covid, the blended approach makes a lot of sense in that staff can, you know, work perhaps part from home and part coming into the office. And I take the point completely. I speak to some staff who are finding the homeworking absolutely fine and others who, quite frankly, are quite desperate to get back. And I think, you know, taking all that into account, I think there's greater scope for rationalisation going forward. But obviously, taking our own staff with us on it.
Thanks very much, Bailey McPherson. Bailey Keenan.
Can you be, can you be, no? I think, Bailey, that Councillor Richardson makes a very valid point earlier in relation to staff slippage. And, you know, it's just a number on these papers. Perhaps the chief exec could organise a briefing that would spell out the areas that were not filled so as the councillors would have a better understanding as to whether they think these posts are relevant to the sort of Covid issues that we deal with at the moment. Because I think that giving people a better understanding of the issues that officers are wrestling with can only help us in decision-making as councillors. Because, you know, on the face of it, I think Councillor Richardson makes some very valid points in relation to, you know, absenteeism, people shielding and whatever. And, you know, it would be better for us to have that greater understanding. So I would welcome that coming forward. The other issue that...
Sorry, Councillor Keenan, you're on mute and that was my fault entirely. Apologies.
I can appreciate you doing that, John.
No, I was trying to pin you.
These things peel them a sense of humour. The, I think the issue that, I say, a briefing on these issues that Councillor Richardson raised would be useful. And an idea of numbers and the overall position of council would be better than just statistics on a spreadsheet. They didn't put the numbers, the people behind it. The other issue that I'd like to raise is obviously we're not in the greatest of financial positions and clearly that lobbying will be going on to make sure that we get the best possible result that we can through government to alleviate the problems that we've had through Covid. But, you know, in our own word, Convenor, you know, I see a spend putting bollards across, blocking off a 20 yards of Strathmartin Road. That doesn't make any bit of sense to me. And any of the answers that I've received from officers, that doesn't make any sense other than we've wasted a great deal of money. And, you know, whilst I've got a meeting to discuss that with officers, then I think it's something that as council, we need to seriously look at. Because we cannot, when we're looking at a deficit, be spending any money unless it is really needed to be done. And I can't see that the bollards that have been put across Strathmartin Road and the thousands of pounds that have been spent on it was anything other than a daft spend by council.
Okay, very specific example, but just to say every penny is a prisoner, I think, absolutely. In terms of your first request, I'll let the chief executive speak for himself. But I don't think you're suggesting, I would hope you aren't suggesting, a kind of line-by-line, post-by-post analysis of information because I think firstly, that would be a bit of a bureaucratic nightmare. And also, I think we've got to be very clear on operational matters that sit with the chief executive. But that's notwithstanding your point that you want to be reassured that the right decisions are being made in the right areas as well. And I go back to the point that I made previously, which are, we're not holding posts in those areas of essential service. And I'm sure the chief executive would be happy to offer some clarification around that, some clarity around that in terms of what that means in practice. So I'll let Greg come in at that point.
Thanks, Convenor. So I'm happy to arrange a briefing for elected members to outline the council's approach. As you've outlined, I don't intend to do that line by line, but I'll give elected members examples of posts that we have filled in the past six to nine months and posts that we deem that are not critical to fill and understanding the rationale behind that. I do think it's important for committee to understand that these kinds of things are delegated to officers and officers take that delegation very seriously. And there is a number of approval routes that services have to go through. And as we look back the recruitment, and again, I'll demonstrate this to elected members, we have recruited into key and significant posts within the organisation. And what we're asking managers and executive directors and heads of service to do is manage their services accordingly to the financial position that the council currently faces. So I'm happy to arrange a briefing for elected members. We'll pull together some information and examples to give you the detail and hopefully provide you the assurance that you need. And I'll outline the approach that officers are taking under the delegated authority which they're operating within. Just in relation to the second point, happy to discuss any points that elected members may have regarding spend that they do not see as essential and for discussions to take place with relevant services relating to that. Because at the point, we are managing a significant overspend and it's important that actions represent the financial position that the council currently faces, particularly within the current financial year.
Thanks for that. Okay, Councillor Mara.
Thank you, Convenor. It's a brief comment relating to the issue around essentially what is commercial property that the council owns or makes use of. And some of the comments there about, I think a report would be welcome on that as the chief executive has already mentioned in terms of our strategy for homeworking and what we're going to make use of in the future. I think there's significant downsides, you know, apart from the impact on individuals about increased amount of homeworking. You know, our opportunity to dispose of assets in a collapsed commercial property market will be pretty limited, it's fair to say. So I'm not sure that it's going to drive any form of revenue into the council. And also, it would shift very significantly, I think, our strategy in city development around actually being people who want to develop the commercial property market in the city. So they're bringing people in for desks and so on and then getting the footfall in the city centre and other places. So I think while it would be good to see that report, I don't think we should see it as an approach that's based on we can save X number of pounds per square. We have to see it in the broader strategy of the city and what we're trying to achieve and what the downsides are as well. So I'll welcome the promise of that report. But as long as it's a balanced account of what we see as the position rather than just about the short-term, clearly very serious financial impact that we're going to see.
Thanks for those comments, Councillor Mara. Absolutely fair and valid points to make. And I can see the chief executive taking note. So that is the final comment. Oh, no, councillor Lynn, you've got your, sorry, councillor Short, you've got your hand up.
Never to be mistaken, councillor Lynn and councillor Short. Mine was really an echo of councillor Mara's with regards to any kind of property rationalisation. I think as such a large and influential employer in Dundee, it would be very, it would be very difficult to encourage other businesses to have a footfall in the city centre and get people using the shops and all the investment in the city centre to then say, oh, by the way, everybody that we have will be working outside the centre in their home, et cetera. So that whole leadership is incredibly important. And I'm sure that will be something that will be taken into consideration because I think it is incredibly important that we do lead by example as an organisation.
Thank you very much for that. And with all of those comments, I will take that as agreed.
To item 10, Dundee City Council 2019-2020 accounts and audit. You have before you the accounts for Dundee City Council, Dundee City Council charitable trusts, the Lord Provost of Dundee Charity Fund, Dundee Trust, along with the External Auditor's Report and the Dundee City Council 2019-2020 Accounts and Audit Response to the External Auditor's Annual Audit Report. These were all submitted to the scrutiny committee on the 18th of November.
Okay, Bailey Wright.
Thank you, Convenor. My question's on 10A, which is the Lord Provost Charity Fund. In the past years, we've been provided with a list of the donators to that fund. And I think we have to agree that donations come from a number of sources, with many organisations working very hard through their fundraising activities. And I know that this hasn't been easy this year to do that due to the various virus restrictions that have stopped them from organising their usual activities and events. However, some of these organisations have still donated money and we should be recognising them for the hard work they have undertaken. So can we have a list of the donators like we have done in the past and acknowledge the hard work and the generosity? That is really very important that we thank everybody who has donated and hope that they're going to donate to the charity fund in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Bailey Wright. I'm looking to Sandy. Can you come in on that point?
Yes, I can just confirm we'll get a list arranged for that and get that circulated as soon as possible.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. No other questions on this item. So again, I'll take that as agreed. Okay, that's all the business. Thank you very much. Good night and have a good week.